All right, I would like to reconvene the meeting of the City Council for February the 22nd, 2011. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in closed session to address the matters that are reflected on the open session agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Selich and then stay standing for the invocation by Pastor Bradley Stenstra of the Newport Harbor Lutheran Church.
Please follow me in the pledge mark flag. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every time an election is held, there are some changes that take place here, oh God. People switch chairs in the front of the room and assume some different responsibilities. Occasionally, new faces even come into this chamber to engage in the many tasks associated with effective governance of the city. The first few weeks of these reorganizations are often anxious ones, as unfamiliar duties must be performed and council members are forced to feel their way into a good working relationship. We thank you for guiding them through these unsettling moments. But an even bigger concern is the one they can face about this point in the cycle, when these so-called "regular" meetings are already starting to become old hat. While the size of the crowd here indicates there's not too much danger of that happening tonight, we still ask that by your presence, Lord, you would prevent anything about this agenda from slipping into the category of routine business. Come amongst us now and fire the imaginations of our elected officials and staff members so that they can picture the full impact such ordinary-sounding stuff as street rehabilitation and trail repair and traffic signal maintenance can have on those residents whose lives will be touched by the decisions that must be made. Invigorate them with both the will and the energy to advance the common good by determining how best to proceed with the conduct of future meetings, the structure of committees, the use of public lands, and the expenditure of funds for the construction of civic projects. Help them discern which of those items on the long list of things clamoring for their attention are truly significant and even urgent, and then give them the wisdom to take the steps that are pleasing to you, the one whose gracious ends we should always seek to further. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. You've been reading the agenda, and I appreciate it. I believe we have a presentation for Mothers Against Drunk Driving. Do we have a representative of MAD available? Please come down.
Do you want me to state and spell my name?
You could just state your name.
Okay. All right, well, good evening. My name is Tiffany Townsend, and I am here from the Orange County chapters of Mother Against Drunk Driving today. I'm actually the program specialist and a full-time employee. We are about to honor four officers, but before we do so, I'd like to take a moment to tell you why I'm involved with MAD and why I personally have such appreciation for the work that these officers do. I am friends with John Willhite and was friends with Nick Ainhart, Courtney Stewart, and Henry Pearson, the angels pitcher that was killed in 2009, and all of the other people in the car. So, for me, it's very personal, and I take it very personally. I know how much the officers do. I know they're typically the first ones on the scene and everything that they do in the day-to-day to help prevent drunk drivers on the road. So, without further ado, it has been resolved by the Deuce Awards Committee of the Orange County Chapter of Mothers Against Drunk Driving that the following officers be honored for their exemplary service to the community and the apprehension of 25 or more impaired drivers in the 2010 fiscal year. I would like to call Officer Bryce Hardy and commend him for making 27 DUI arrests last year. I would like to call Officer Eric Little and commend him for making 29 DUI arrests I would also like to call Officer Bill Hume and commend him for making 32 DUI arrests All right. I would now like to call Officer Brad Miller. He is Newport Beach's top departmental DUI arresting officer, having made 62 DUI arrests Sergeant Lowe's gonna accept on his behalf.
Unfortunately, Officer Miller stuck out on the gas leak. All accepted.
Good, good. I would like to also point out that you do have an officer who had 100 or more DUI arrests, and that's a different award, and we honor them at our annual luncheon at the Richard Nixon Library. So, the community extends its sincere appreciation, together with best wishes, for a safe and successful law enforcement career. On behalf of those who have been saved, who don't know that they were saved, who don't know you exist, MAD thanks you.
Very good. Well, we have a humdinger of a council meeting this evening, so we might as well get with it. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the announcements?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off and set them in the silent mode. Thank you.
All right, it's time for announcements. Councilmember Hill, did you have any announcements?
I have none.
Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
And Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, the Newport Bay Executive Committee met, and I've talked about the problem with selenium. And one of the solutions is something called a Cienega project, which the Irvine Ranch Water District has been suggesting they would proceed with. They have a grant from the federal government to pay for 25 percent of it, but they need a response by mid-March. My feeling, and I think staff's feeling, is that it's premature for us to invest in this, but I would like to at least have the council as a whole have a chance to look at that, so if we could have a very brief report on it at our next meeting.
All right, Councilmember Selich?
I have nothing this evening.
And Councilmember Curry?
The, well, you want to, Councilmember Daigle first?
Oh, you go.
Okay. Oh, the Association of California Cities of Orange County had its inaugural meeting this last week and kicked off to a strong organization. I think that's really gonna make it a lot easier for cities in the county to work together and to communicate and pass information back and forth, so that organization is off to a very strong and robust start.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, speaking of public safety, this year is also the 100th anniversary of our fire department. So, Fire Department is celebrating its centennial. They were volunteer until 1927, and at that time, there was a combination department. We paid the drivers and the captains, and then when they sounded the bell, people showed up to help fight the fires. A lot of our community's history and as far as the fire department is at the Balboa Island Museum, and that includes a replica of a 1921 La France truck. That was our first truck that we purchased from the city of Long Beach. In terms of celebrating this year, there'll be a number of events, Pancake Breakfast, as well as our Public Safety Day. In addition, there's gonna be some items that commemorate our centennial. Specifically, there's gonna be a seal on the side of our trucks, and this is what the seal looks like here. On the front door of our trucks, there is the city's seal, and on the back door now is gonna be our centennial seal. So, watch for the seal, and our firemen are very excited about the year ahead. And in addition, they have also designed a centennial badge, and for a fireman or police officer, badges are very important. It's what, for them, enters into a commitment to service and a willingness to put their life on the line. So, I hope when you see our public safety personnel that you thank them for all the great work they're doing for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have one announcement. In the supplemental agenda that was distributed, it so happened that Items 16 and 17 were listed under the heading of Consent Calendar. That was a clerical error. Those items will be considered during the regular agenda items for this evening. And then, I would like to get council's consent here to move up the item for the Ronald Reagan Centennial Memorial to be the first item to be heard after the consent calendar. Do I have the consent of council for that? So, just so everyone knows, that will be the first new business item heard. And so, with that, then, let's move on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar, Items 1 through 11 are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle, did you wish to pull any items?
No, no items, thank you.
And Councilmember Curry?
No items.
And Councilmember Selich?
No items this evening.
Councilmember Hill?
No items, thank you.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Number nine.
Number nine. And none for Councilmember Gardner and none for me. So, does any member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? If so, please come down.
Dick Nichols from Corona del Mar. I would like to just have something said on the closed session. I think there were very important items taken up there, both on the group homes and the city business, and anything you can bring to fore, I would appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
I'm gonna leave it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. I believe that the closed session report has already been given, and it's really not a part of the consent calendar, but is there anything you wish to add, Mr. Hunt, to your closed session report?
No, thank you. The council did meet in closed session to discuss the matters on the, reflected on the open session agenda. There was no reportable action taken. Under state law, when certain things arrive at a reach level of reportable action, we will certainly report them out.
All right. Does anyone else wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing no one, then Councilmember Rosansky, I guess we'll deal with.
I would like to move. The actions 1 through 11 on the consent calendar.
And a second?
Wait, except for Item Nine.
Except for Item Nine, sorry.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I will record his abstention on the minute since I was absent from the last meeting.
Okay. Anyone wish to make a public comment on the consent motion? Having heard seeing none, then shall we vote?
Motion carries.
Okay, now, Mr. Rosansky.
Thank you.
Item Nine.
Yeah, I only bring it up in that I am a little concerned that our 20-year cover over Big Canyon Reservoir is already deteriorating, and I did speak with Dave Webb about it earlier today. It seems that we have at least repaired the damage that has occurred to date. However, what concerns me even more is that, I guess when we tested the cover, there was no indication of UV protection left on the cover, and so I wonder, is that because it was never included in the manufacture of the product, or that it just dissipated somehow? Or, I never understood exactly, or I didn't understand what that test meant, that there was no... And then, further, I would hope that the city attorney's office is coordinating with Public Works here, because it seems like we might need to protect our rights here as far as product liability or even fraud. I don't, you know, there's several allegations here, construction defects, because we're, they're only warranting the product, the actual fabric, and I imagine the labor component of having to reinstall, take out the old reservoir cover, and put in a new reservoir cover is gonna be in the millions of dollars, not just $120,000 that we're approving tonight. So, I would hope that we're pursuing all remedies.
We're aware of the situation and working with Public Works, and we'll make a recommendation, one way or the other, to the council if we believe it's appropriate to take action from a legal standpoint.
Good. Those are my concerns. I would like, to the extent that we do get any follow-up information on why there is no UV protection any longer in a 20-year cover, that... Well, yeah, that's my concern. If it was bad from the beginning, then we should have more than just a warranty on the fabric. I mean, that's probably the least of the cost, I would imagine, or at least equal in to the construction, so. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll just move the item.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, please vote. Excuse me, public comment on this item? All right, please vote.
Motion carries.
I would like to make a public comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Nichols. I didn't see you moving toward the podium, so that's fine.
Well, I held up my hand, too.
Would you please make your comment?
Yes, I happen to be in that business, not building outside covers, but using fabric for long-term use here. And the UV protection is the blackness that they put in there to try and keep it from, I mean, absorb, so it'll absorb heat. But there, the problem is, is apparently that has deteriorated where the fabric is separated, and that's usually a pretty final dissipation of the product. And so, it probably will ultimately need to be replaced and probably pretty close. And I understand that it hasn't lasted very long, and it's going to cost in the millions. So, it's, it is, it is a big project. I think it deserves some discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Why don't we revote now that we've had public comment? Okay.
Motion carries.
With that, let's do the oral reports on committee activities, and then we'll proceed with new business. Councilmember Daigle?
None.
Councilmember Curry? And Councilmember Selich?
None.
Councilmember Hill?
None.
Rosansky?
None, thank you.
And Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, the Harbor Commission met, and there's been an issue at the Irvine Company's yacht basin over by 333 and where the Ruben Lee was. And when they got the permission to do the marine basin, they also had to provide a certain amount of public access, public docks. And the problem has been that they've been used, misused a lot of times with a lot of noise for the people on Linda Isle, who are very, very close to where the public docks were. So, the Irvine Company, the Harbor Commissioners met and came, and with the residents of Linda Isle, came up with a new solution which preserves the public use but moves it to an area where it will not impact the residents and which provides the protection that the Irvine Company needs for its tenants there with their boats and everything. So, it was a very, one of those wonderful situations where we actually come up with a solution that pleases everyone.
Very good. And I have no committee reports, and so let's move on, then, to the first item of business, which would be the Reagan Centennial Memorial. Before we begin, I suspect a lot of members of the audience here are here for this item. May I see a show of hands of how many people would like to make a comment on this item? Okay, quite a few. So, with that, I'd like to poll council here as to whether or not we should set a three-minute limit on public comment for this item, to be sure that everyone has an opportunity to talk. All right? So, we will have a three-minute limit. I would make one exception to that, and that is, to the extent that there is an individual who speaks on behalf of an organization and therefore would make comments on behalf of a number of people in the audience, if those people would identify themselves, I'd be glad to extend a five-minute opportunity for that individual in order to help move the meeting along. And I will call for those people. When it comes time for public comment, I will ask for anyone representing an organization to please come up first. And then, with regard to the meeting, I know this is an issue that has a lot of passion around it, both pro and con, and it's important, though, that the city council be able to conduct a rational understanding of the issues and the facts and arrive at a conclusion, and that requires civil debate on the issue. And so, I do wish to ask the audience to observe proper decorum in terms of not being disruptive in any respect, as any speaker is at the podium or anyone else is talking. If we can just observe, the same courtesy that we would expect from others, I would certainly appreciate that, and I know council would, too. The purpose that you are here for is to convince council to make a decision, and so you should be addressing council and not members of the audience in that respect, to just give you that pointer. And I'd say one other thing, and that it is the quality and the breadth of comments that will carry the day as opposed to the number of comments. And so, if you plan to say something and you heard somebody else say exactly the same thing, don't feel too compelled to come up and say it again. All right, now, Councilmember Curry has been in the forefront of this agenda item here for some time, and I understand from him that there are some recent developments on this issue. I would like to turn over the dais to start with to Councilmember Curry to make some remarks, and then we will discuss this at the council level and get other council members' views, and then open it to public comment before we take any action. So, therefore, Councilmember Curry, would you like to continue, please?
Thank you, Mayor Hind. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see some of you, some of you again from last week. Welcome to the city council. What I'd like to do is make some remarks that sort of set the stage as to why we're pursuing this memorial to President Reagan, with some of the reasons for it, and then also to share with you some of the thoughts that I've had after our meeting last week at the Arts Commission in response to some of the comments that many of you made, in ways that we can do this that hopefully will be less objectionable to some in the community, perhaps, perhaps not, and also address some of the issues which you raised with us. So, that will be our goal, and if you'll bear with me, I'd just like to set a little bit of history and precedent about what we're doing, because in the last several days and events from the Super Bowl to the Rose Parade to movie premieres in hundreds of communities throughout America, this nation, and indeed the world, stopped to pay its respects to Ronald Reagan on his 100th birthday. Last week, a Gallup poll for President's Day found that Americans nationally regard Reagan as our greatest president by a five-point margin over President Lincoln. In January, our city council offered our citizens an opportunity to participate in this international event by agreeing to accept donations for a statue in our city remembering President Reagan. Our citizens have responded to this with both their hearts and their dollars, and our fundraising goals have been reached in record time with over 60 residents giving more than $50,000. And tonight, we will decide where this memorial shall be located. As is the case with all of our great leaders, they are, in our American democratic system, partisan. This has been the case since Washington. In the course of the process and vigorous public debate, some in our community have raised questions, and it's important that we carefully and thoughtfully consider their concerns. First, why do we honor our past national leaders in the first place? Well, I would submit that it's because that's how we remember and transmit our history to our children and future generations. We all are somewhat familiar with President Jefferson, because he's on the nickel and Mount Rushmore, but less familiar with the equally important but less recognized President Madison. Many of us growing up were inspired by stories of people like Kennedy and MacArthur, but our children are losing these touchstones to our past. And if you don't believe me, those of you watching at home tonight, ask your kids if they've ever heard of Churchill or Eisenhower. In a recent Jeopardy! episode, the buzzer went off without the contestants being able to recognize a picture of President Reagan. In all of Newport Beach, we have not a single piece of public art celebrating any national statesman, humanitarian, military leader, explorer, or artist. The depictions of the McFadden family and John Wayne on the Centennial Memorial are as close as we come. It's as if history beyond the '73 freeway and earlier than 1906 never happened or is not important to our community. Second question, how should we regard a past president such as President Reagan? Let me read you a quote. "This is not a political gathering. It's a celebration of great men, of a great man, who led our nation through historic times. It's a celebration shared here today by many who knew him and loved him well. He meant many things to many different people. He could reach out to men and women of diverse races and backgrounds and inspire them with new hope and new confidence in war and peace." Those words were spoken 29 years ago on the occasion of Franklin Roosevelt's 100th birthday. They were spoken by then-President Ronald Reagan. Here's what Senator Ted Kennedy said about Reagan. "I can't help affirming that Ronald Reagan deserves his special niche in the minds of the American people. An optimist myself, I admire optimists, and he made people feel upbeat about the country." Kennedy went on to reminisce about an evening at his home, saying this. "Reagan could be warmly generous. He offered an eloquent tribute to Jack's memory at a fundraiser to endow the Kennedy Library at my home in McLean. It was a wonderful evening, and I remain a close friend of Nancy Reagan." Reagan was raising funds to help tell future generations about the legacy of President Jack Kennedy, a kindness Ted Kennedy relates warmly 15 years later in his book and shown in the recent Reagan film. 29 years after Reagan's eloquent tribute to Roosevelt, President Barack Obama, in the pages of USA Today, wrote the following. "President Reagan recognized the American people's hunger for accountability and change, putting our nation on a bold new path towards both. And although he knew that conflicts between parties and political adversaries were inevitable, he also knew that they would never be strong enough to break the ties that bind us together. He understood that while we may see the world differently and hold different opinions about what's best for our country, the fact remains that we are all patriots who put the welfare of our fellow citizens above all else." President Obama continues. "He understood that it's always mourning in America. That was his gift, and we remain forever grateful." Recently, our Senator Dianne Feinstein wrote a moving tribute noting Reagan embodied a spirit of bipartisanship. He was a true gentleman of American politics. I hope we embody his spirit of... embody his spirit of bipartisanship to keep our country strong and united during one of the most critical moments in our history. Reagan praising Roosevelt, Kennedy praising Reagan, Reagan praising Kennedy, Obama praising Reagan, the eloquent tribute by Senator Feinstein. Ladies and gentlemen, our leaders get it. They recognize that when the last election is over and the office holding is done, and particularly when we pass the binds of this earth, that we transcend partisanship, and we become simply Americans. We quit fighting the old battles of the 1980s, or the 1780s, or the 1880s. This has always been the strength and the genius of our nation, and this is the example that we, as a community, should follow tonight as we consider this matter. Next, why honor Ronald Reagan? In Krakow, Poland, another city where he never lived, they have renamed Central Square Reagan Square, and the Catholic Church held a special Thanksgiving mass on his birthday to celebrate his role in extending freedom and democracy in Poland. I was privileged to be president when former Polish President Kozinski posthumously awarded Reagan the highest Polish medal and credited him with bringing freedom to the Polish people. This is the same in nations throughout the world. Reagan was a liberator. In London later this year, they'll dedicate a statue in Groziner Square for his role in expanding world freedom. This is what makes him great. We can disagree or agree about his role in domestic policy, but all of us as Americans have to support and agree with the fact that he was one of the people in this world who extended freedom to millions. Now, at home, President Reagan did reduce tax rates from 70% to 28% and set off the longest economic expansion in our history. He reduced inflation from 13.5% to 5% and created 18.4 million new jobs. To put that number in perspective, we currently have about 15 million unemployed Americans. If President Obama can equal this accomplishment today, no doubt in 30 years, we and many others will be putting up statues for him. But as President Obama himself noted, Reagan's greatest gift is he restored American self-confidence, and he gave us an example of how to lead without being mean-spirited. Some say, yes, he was president, but what did he do for Newport Beach? Well, first, let me say this. We have every right to share in his accomplishments as president and governor. And second, to me, it seems somewhat small to focus on this question when others credit him for freedom and liberty itself. But indeed, I think he did much for us. A frequent visitor to our city, Reagan received 77% of the Newport Beach vote in 1984, nearly eight out of 10, including a lot of Democrats who voted for him, a total that will likely never be equaled by any other candidate. If anyone could relate to our residents and earn their affection, it was him. Now, during the process, many of you have come up to me to relate a personal story about meeting President Reagan in Newport Beach. In a speech during his first month as governor, Reagan spoke out against the Pacific Coast Freeway, the greatest single threat to our city, saying, and I quote, "I do not believe a man in Sacramento can outline the best route for a freeway in Newport Beach." As one example, let's look at his environmental record as governor. He hasn't given much credit in this area, but he signed the law creating the Air Resources Board and appointed the first coastal commissioners. These initiatives impact the quality of our life in our city today. He set aside 145,000 acres of California for open space, seven times the recent Irvine Company donation, and more than any other governor since. He created two undersea Pacific Reserves, the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency and the California Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. This is part of the birthright enjoyed by all Californians, including the 86,000 who call Newport Beach home. As president, his focus on national defense enriched the employees of local firms such as Ford Aerospace and Rockwell and contributed to the wealth of our community. Many who achieved their economic security in the 1980s, and there are many in our city for whom this is true, can thank Ronald Reagan. He appointed 10 of our citizens to high-ranking federal positions and several more of us to lower-level jobs. As president, twice he has recorded as telling a story about young people, about young people filling sandbags to protect Newport Beach homes as an example of volunteerism. No, he never had a 9266 something zip code, but no president was more beloved and no president had a greater connection to our city. Now, let me say a special word to my friends and neighbors who are Democrats, and it can be hard to be a Democrat in Newport Beach. I lived in the Bay Area for eight years, and I understand. Now, some of you have said that honoring Ronald Reagan is like saying you're not welcome here. And let me just say personally, flat out, that's not the intent or purpose of me or anyone at all involved in this effort. We live in such a hyper-partisan, almost tribal environment that when an effort to honor someone from the other tribe, it generates a call to arms to stop it, at least let the other side be seen as winning. My friends, the only way to stop this destructive partisan trend is to stop it. We should see the good in leaders from the other side. President Kennedy, who some call a Democratic icon, was killed when I was eight years old. He was always an inspiration to me, but as I came of age because of Nixon and then because his brothers were potential national candidates, we never celebrated his service or his inspiration. And as I read more about the man and studied his speeches, I concluded how wrong it was to deny his legacy simply because I was a member of the other party. Now, as I've said in the press, this is an effort to help tell our history to future generations, and that should include all our history. And many of our neighbors have come together to honor President Reagan. And I understand that a different group of neighbors and residents may wish to honor leaders like President Kennedy or President Roosevelt. Let me say I would personally support these efforts. Those who have urged inclusion and toleration know that you achieve tolerance by providing the opportunity for different views, not by homogenizing and eliminating all views. My friends, if we can't find it in ourselves to honor President Reagan, we'll never find it in ourselves to honor someone of a different political persuasion. And for those of you who say we should only honor local people, let me say, if you think honoring President Reagan's hard, well, you try honoring somebody everybody else knows. But let me say this. Let's do that, too. Let's find a venue such as a Walk of Fame like they have in Anaheim or Palm Springs, like based on the winter Hollywood, or some other means to recognize the exceptional among us. We have more than 50 public parks and lots of open wall space. We will run out of people to honor long before we run out of places that would benefit from public art. Now, let me address some of the specific objections that were brought up last week at the Arts Commission. Some have said this honor is not appropriate for a civic center. Now, our Capitol Building in Washington is full of statues, including Reagan's. Reagan's painting hangs in the White House and the State Capitol. His name is on our federal courthouse and state office building. Lincoln graces the grounds of the Long Beach and LA County Civic Centers. Indeed, for you art critics, Lincoln is now standing in front of his third Long Beach City Hall. National leaders grace civic centers and courthouses from coast to coast, and dozens of city halls remain from the hundreds built by the WPA that include a plaque honoring Franklin Roosevelt. The street grid in San Francisco is named for our middle presidents, and no one has ever suggested that any of this is inappropriate. There are 107 Reagan dedications in the United States, including in California, three parks, five schools, a community center, and an aircraft carrier. None of these destroyed the social fabric of the communities in which they are located. I just returned from New York, where I landed at Kennedy Airport, got on the Jackie Robinson Expressway, passed LaGuardia Airport, over Roosevelt Island and FDR Drive, to a hotel near Madison and Vanderbilt. I paid a hotel tax to support the Javits Convention Center, had lunch in Rockefeller Center, and although I didn't see them, I knew that Lincoln Center, the Lincoln Tunnel, Washington Square Park, George Washington Bridge, and Grant's Tomb were nearby. None of that offended me. It was all part of the greatness of the city of New York. Now, while I personally find the objections to civic center to lack a level of credibility, nonetheless, in consultation with the donors and in light of the comments that many of you raised at the Arts Commission, I am prepared, and the donors are prepared, to suggest a compromised location at Castaways Park. Now, I know, because I've already seen it in the papers, people say, oh, no, not there either, not there either. But most of you who spoke last week spoke and said that the civic center had a special connection. So, in consideration of those views, I'm going to propose that we place it in Castaways Park where the Marines Memorial and where the Field of Honor is done on an annual basis. And I hope that the opponents, who voiced objections to that last week, will take that as a sign of compromise and goodwill. Secondly, concerns were expressed about process. As you will recall, in October, I proposed the creation of a Ronald Reagan Centennial Commission to coordinate events and consideration by other city commissions related to honoring President Reagan. This was similar to special committees we formed during the Newport Beach Centennial and the Marines Memorial. Now, since this idea was not approved, the Donors Committee served this role and, in 30 days, raised sufficient funds, identified a proposed likeness of the president, and moved the project forward. All of this happened so quickly, it was before the Arts Commission, which meets monthly, had the opportunity to even have a meeting. I think it tells us the power of private citizen involvement in civic affairs. Now, since concerns have been raised about the artists, the Donor Committee has decided to solicit additional proposals in addition to that provided by Mr. Watts. In fact, I anticipate that Mr. Victor, Benjamin Victor, who did the Marines Memorial and who has a statue in Statuary Hall in Washington, will be one of the people who will submit. And let me say, we invite anybody who wants to submit to submit. The door is open. I would also note that the concerns raised about Mr. Watts with great flourish at the Arts Commission and in today's paper were in the form of blog comments from his brother-in-law, with whom he's involved in a business dispute, not in legitimate news or public records disclosure. And I think this was both unfortunate and unfair to Mr. Watts. At the Arts Commission meeting, I think Commissioner Trelle very astutely pointed out at the meeting that our policies I-9 and I-11 do not contemplate the specific circumstance we have here where donors provide funds for an undesignedated but yet specific piece of art. Now, it's my belief, particularly given the controversy, that the design of the statue, that the donors themselves should have the final say on the design of the memorial. Now, some of the donors have expressed concern to me that the Arts Commission may not be fully committed to a memorial honoring President Reagan, but frankly, in fairness and consideration of our commissioners, it's not fair nor appropriate to ask them to manage a memorial for a president with whom they may not have a personal affinity. And finally, a traditional city process will by necessity involve substantial staff, time, and cost. And one of the things I think both the supporters and the opponents of this project are united on is we don't want to see a lot of public money, or any public money for that matter, put into this process. So accordingly, I will offer a motion to move forward with a process that recognizes the key role of the donors, limits public expenditures, while allowing the Arts Commission to have advice and recommendations into the selection of the art. Now, let me address some other stated reasons for the opposition. On their website, the Newport Beach Women's Democratic Club, who, by the way, and I see Dr. Suzanne Sabre here, did a very good job in having their members email and contact the council, have the following listing. Ten reasons why you would never want to see our children taught that this was a great president. And I applaud them for their honesty, because I think that's frankly a lot of the reasons behind. A lot of the opposition is trying to manage how people think about President Reagan's legacy. The first reason is that Reagan dismantled FDR's safety net and taxes. Taxes under Roosevelt were a size of 90%. Kennedy cut them first, and they were 70% when Reagan took office. And I don't know a single national leader today, including our president, who would support putting tax rates back where they were prior to President Reagan. And as for the safety net, just last Tuesday, in his press conference, President Obama said, and I quote, "Ronald Reagan and Tip O'Neill saved Social Security." Now, I appreciate that kind of opposition. But perhaps more troubling, in the Daily Pilot, 15-year-old Peter Jensen of Lido Island wrote a thoughtful letter to the editor in support of President Reagan. And in response, Bootsy, you know, all cowardly bloggers hide their real names, wrote the following response to young Peter. "Peter, Reagan and Hitler have a lot in common, and now you want to erect a statue to that brainless nitwit in Newport Beach? I think not. You will need to wait till all of us old-timers die before you try such nonsense again." Well, what we teach our children, indeed. Suffice it to say, I do not believe it's the supporters of this project who have been the source of partisan ugly divisiveness that's bubbled up in our community. Our citizens have raised their own funds, contributed to the city, and are providing a splendid piece of public art. It seems to me that we owe it to them and to the taxpayers to use this gift on their behalf in a manner that respects their wishes and respects the life and service of President Reagan. To those of you who gave, in some cases sacrificially, to support this effort, I want to say on behalf of the city, I am truly humbled by your support. This effort demonstrated that our citizens were yearning for the opportunity to be part of a larger worldwide effort to honor the memory of President Reagan, and they expressed tremendous gratitude to the city for making this possible. We owe it to them to use this gift to enable future generations to remember the man and this moment. So accordingly, in recognition of the fact that 100% of the cost to create the memorial is being provided by private donors, and in light of the fact that current council policies do not contemplate a process whereby donors play an important role in the creation and selection of artwork, I move that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with an artist to provide a memorial to President Reagan following his due diligence and in consultation with the memorial donor committee, and in consideration of any advice received by the Arts Commission and the PBNR Commission in accordance with the direction of this motion. The council directs the memorial to be placed in Castaways Park. The Arts Commission is requested to provide its recommendation among the choices for selection provided by the donor committee to the city manager and the donor committee, should it so desire. The council also requests the city manager consult with the donor committee and the PBNR Commission regarding the specific site within Castaways Park. I believe this motion captures some of the process issues which were raised. It ensures that we'll have multiple statues, we'll have Arts Commission input into the process, and anyone who would like to propose will have the opportunity to propose. And, Mr. Mayor, that is my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Curry. I think that was a full disposition of the issue from your perspective. Do we have a second to that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a clarification that I would consider seconding that motion. Do I interpret the motion to say that the city manager be authorized upon the broadening of the selection, the opening of the selection?
Right.
To where multiple artists could be considered, that the Arts Commission would be consulted and asked for input
Right.
in that process, and that the PBNR would be consulted on the site?
On the specific site within Castaways Park, yes.
The specific site of the Castaways Park.
Right.
All right. Based upon those qualifications, I would second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and I think I saw Councilmember Zansky hit his button first.
Yeah, I guess I'm not exactly sure what consulted means. I mean, we have council policies that govern art. I guess I don't agree with Councilman Curry that this falls outside of those policies. And so, I mean, what's the point of, so we're going to just like ask the Arts Commission what you think and then do whatever we want to do anyway? Or, I don't understand what consulted means, so maybe you can expand on what consulted means.
Well, let's use the example of the Marines Memorial. The Marines Memorial, we formed a special committee. I was the chairman of it, and that committee undertook the process, solicited the artists, raised the money, raised the money after we had already had the art in place for that process. The Arts Commission ratified the selection of the donor, as did the PBNR Commission, of the Marines Memorial Committee. I believe, and I was not involved in it, but I think the Centennial Committee worked more or less the same way. Here, we didn't have a, if you will, project committee, so the donor committee plays the same role. So I believe that they have the opportunity to opine upon, you know, the donor committee is going to have multiple candidate art, and the Arts Commission will be asked to offer their advice as to the art to the city manager, who will be the ultimate picker. But I believe, as I've said before, in this case, because of the fact that we've raised the money, I think it's critically important that the donors have the ability to sort of choose the art that is most appropriate, given the fact they raised the money. That's what raising money privately means.
Okay.
Well, I mean, if that's the case, then they can raise the money, have whatever statue they want built, and submit it under council policy I-11 for donation to the city. I mean, that's, we have a policy that way. This is kind of, I mean, not that I want to get into an argument about this, Keith, but, and I voted for the prior motion to authorize the city to accept funds. But I would assume that, and so I'm supportive of the statue somewhere in the city. Don't get me wrong. I do support the statue being somewhere in the city as other statues. If other people want to donate money to other statues, we can consider those as well. But I do believe that we have policies. We set policies up to prevent any of us from pushing our own agenda onto the city. Not that I'm saying you're pushing an agenda onto the city. I'm just saying that these are why we have these policies in place, so that ideas can be vetted, so that we could get the best possible for our city, not just a statue, but the best possible Reagan statue if we're going to get one. And we're going to put it in the best possible place that makes sense to, I guess ultimately, the council, but to the residents of our city. So, I guess I would offer an alternative motion at this point and say, you know, to continue with the process of collecting funds, but that the process be conducted either under council policy I-9 or under council policy I-11. And that would be my alternative motion.
I can't, I don't want to second anything. I'm very concerned that we have blown this, frankly. And I, too, voted for it. And I've gotten some very thoughtful comments on both sides. I hate these things. I hate it when people make good sense on both sides. I mean, it's like you want all, one side to be complete idiots and the other side to be sages, and it's never that quite that easy. But I'm very concerned that what we're saying basically is, you raise the money, you get to do it. And that shouldn't be the way it is at all.
Let me-
No, 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 no.
Yep, yep.
And I'm also concerned that the idea of transcending politics is wonderful, but I'm thinking that maybe President Reagan, if you're a Republican and you're running for office, the first two words out of your mouth are Ronald Reagan. for office, the first two words out of your mouth are Ronald Reagan. And he is very much an icon of a political position. So I don't know that enough time has passed for us to transcend that political aspect of it, and I had not considered that. And, no, please don't. And the other concern I have is our public grounds belong to all of us. And, I mean, I really thought, this is Newport Beach, I thought everybody would be up in, you know, like yippy skippy, we're going to do something for Ronald Reagan. And it wasn't the women of the Democratic Club, it was a lot of people I know, and I know personally that are Republicans. One man, I shook Ronald Reagan's hand, I was so proud of that, don't do it, that they don't feel it's appropriate to put on public property. So I'm eager to listen to the comments tonight, I always learn from these things, but I'm really very concerned that we may have taken a misstep here, and maybe we should take even a bigger step back before we proceed.
So is there a second to Councilmember Rosansky's substitute motion here? All right, then I guess that dies for lack of a second. So we're still considering the original motion as made. Do we have other comments from council members? Okay.
They're ready to go out there, let them go.
So, in that case, I will open it up for public comment, and then we'll bring it back to council for further consideration after public comment. Do we have anyone in here that is representing an organization on behalf of a number of people that might otherwise speak? Ma'am, would you please come forward? And I saw another person raise her hand. So let's allow these two people to come first, and I'm hopeful that you can say what you need to say in about five minutes. I recognize Councilmember Curry took quite a lot longer than that, so we won't be quite so prescriptive here.
He's a tough act to follow. Councilman Curry is a tough act to follow. Good evening, I'm Carrie Reynolds, a longtime resident of Newport Beach, and I'm also the official chair of the Reagan Memorial Donor Committee. So I am here tonight to read a message from all of these donors, people who've donated private money for this commemorative sculpture. And I don't want to be redundant and repeat all the accolades that Councilman Curry had for Ronald Reagan, so I'll shorten it. I'll shorten the message that these donors would like to convey. As Councilman Curry has already explained, Ronald Reagan was an extraordinary human being. Now, that alone obviously does not warrant a sculpture nor a statue. I dare say there are many people in the room tonight that are extraordinary people, but they will never see a memorial to them erected anywhere. However, here's what the donor advocates strongly believe that separates Ronald Reagan from other extraordinary leaders. Not only was he the governor of this great state, but he was also the president of this United States, and moreover, he was beloved and admired by people around the globe. Councilman Curry already alluded to that, but I want to reaffirm that. He was really a person who stood for that shining beacon on the hill, and the American dream, and the American value. Our donor committee truly believes that he was an iconic figure, and that this decision should not be a partisan issue based on divisive ideology. There are copious examples, Keith Curry brought them up again, of statues, paintings, pictures, monuments, sculptures, and on and on, of various leaders, and they are all placed in different places all over the country. I can't remember how many Councilman Curry cited. How many?
Hundred and seven.
Okay. FDR, JFK, MLK, Lincoln, they're all there. And they were created to honor extraordinary leadership, not political parties. There was a timely poll that was already quoted, but I'd like to reiterate this one part. The Gallup poll that asked people, "Who was your favorite American president?" By far, it was the Gipper, Ronald Reagan. Number two was Lincoln. Number three was Clinton. Number four was Washington. And five was JFK. And there are monuments for all of those people all over the land. Now personally, I would probably not order the presidents in that same manner, but I think that ordering shows or reflects the profound effect that Ronald Reagan had on the American public. And our donor group strongly believes that his life and legacy should live on in this state that he loved and cherished, because we feel that it's the right thing to do. And I'd also like to strongly recommend and request that the donor group, if this does proceed, that the donor group is involved in a specific artist or sculpture selected. Thank you very much for your time, and I think I'm under five minutes, aren't I?
I believe you are.
Members of the council and city manager, I am the aforementioned Dr. Suzanne Saveri, the president of the Newport Beach Women's Democratic Club, and I appreciate very much Mr. Curry's recognition that it is not always easy to be a Democrat in Newport Beach. In fact, I always think back to a time in my yacht club bar when I was asked what I thought of William Clinton, and I said, "I think he's a caring man who's doing his best." I had several people do this to me as a result of that statement. I learned pretty quickly that Bill Clinton was a highly polarized, very, very significant figure and created enormous emotional reactions to people who had different views on that man. Now, because the ten things to remember about Ronald Reagan, some of the many reasons we Democrats would never want to see our children taught that this was a great president has already been mentioned, let me just very briefly, because I think a considerable time has been taken telling us how wonderful Ronald Reagan was, we believe Ronald Reagan's voodoo economics was the exact cause of the current collapse in economics that we have today by deregulating Wall Street and the dismantling of FDR's safety net is just a legacy that is being continued in Wisconsin as of the moment. Savings and loans crisis, greatest banking collapse since the Great Depression, $153 billion disappeared in that crisis. The Keating Five, cronies of Senator John McCain and Ronald Reagan received slaps on the wrist for taking down these banks. The junk bond crisis, the lack of regulation, the beginning of the greed is good era, the endless attacks on labor, starting with the air traffic controllers attack first week he was in office. Reduced taxes for the wealthy while increasing taxes on the middle class seven years in a row. Constant reductions in the security net for the middle class, including throwing the mentally disabled into the streets and removing Social Security benefits for widows and their children. Iran-Contra crisis, moving our country from being the biggest lender nation in the world when he was elected, to after his vice president left office, to being the biggest debtor nation in the world. The presidency of Ronald Reagan was marked by multiple scandals and the conviction of 138 administration officials, the largest number of its time. But worst of all, in our estimation, was the acceptance of Ronald Reagan of a birthday gift from the Japanese government in 1989, as a result of eight years spent during a decade. And I was a business consultant during these years, where what was felt by many business leaders, unfair trade practices led to the dismantling of our electronics industry and most of our automotive industry. I only bring this up because we so clearly had a series of identifications of how wonderful Ronald Reagan is. I don't have a problem with the Gallup poll, I like Ronald Reagan. How could you not like the man? He has the highest likability numbers in the world, but that doesn't mean he was one of our best presidents. I'm here to say, what he does is make our blood boil, just as those in the room who feel that way about Clinton. It is the wrong person in the wrong time. It is a divisive instance. What I would like to propose, and I do appreciate the reaching across the divide that has taken place here, I would like to propose a creation of a citizens' commission. This is an opportunity, I think, to bring us together, rather than the opposite. The Newport Beach Women's Democratic Club has a mission, and that mission is for the civil and respectful discussion of things on which we differ. If we could create a bipartisan or a multi-partisan citizens' commission to come together and look at this issue of creating a memorial, not just to one president, but to multiple presidents, and find a location that is satisfactory to the community, we may find people on all sides putting a lot of money in there. We've had some brilliant recommendations from our audience already. If you want to take Ronald Reagan's statue and have that be the only statue, then I'd love to see it in a small enclosed area at Hoag Hospital and give the money for the beginning of an Alzheimer's treatment unit. That would be an extraordinary way for me to say, I can see that as a bipartisan, multi-citizen thing. Bill Clinton had a 77% approval rating when he left office. He would have been elected over both of the candidates who ran after him. The reality is, we can cite all kinds of things, and what I'd like to propose here is that we reach back across that divide and we say, can we turn this problem into an opportunity where we can gather a commission of citizens if we want to find a place to honor presidents? Let's do that. I am not of the opinion that just because somebody puts money up and we don't understand why the money is taxed deductible, that person should have a say on what public property is done with, what's done with public property. I thank you very much for giving all of us the opportunity to have our say, and I do hope that we can find an opportunity here rather than the opposite. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that speaks for an organization this evening? Okay, then I'd be happy to take comment from anyone else who would like to make a comment, and we're now back to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Alan Beek. I am a Republican, and I wish to express my appreciation to you for your comments on civilized discourse. I appreciate them, thank you very much. It is not right to place a statue of Ronald Reagan on city property. If it were right to honor great presidents with statues, we would long ago have had statues of Washington and Lincoln. It is clear that the purpose of the proposed statue is political, to express admiration for President Reagan's remarkable achievement in getting the biggest tax increase in history, yet at the same time more than doubling the national debt. That is phenomenal. But city property should not be used for political statements. I hope I'm under my three-minute limit. Thank you.
By some stretch. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to address you about one of my favorite subjects, subject dear to me, public art, and I'd like to sort of shift the conversation if I could-
May I have your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy Muslin. My name is Nancy Muslin. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for 35 years, although now I split my time between Newport and my studio where we live in downtown Los Angeles. I'm an artist. I have completed 10 large public artworks for different cities in California and Nevada, and I've been a finalist in numerous other public art projects and competitions. For that reason, I'd like to shift this conversation from a political one about, it really is irrelevant whether Reagan was a good president or a bad president, or whether we admire him or not. We're talking about public art, so I'd like to shift this conversation to be about art, which is where it really should have been in the very first place. It's important that the process whereby art is selected for public property, that it be professional, fair, open, and inspired. If we want to end up with art that contributes to the quality of life in Newport Beach, that attracts people to our parks and the businesses close by, and that represents the sophistication and creative energy of our city, we want the best of what is available in Southern California 21st century art. So how is this accomplished? It is not accomplished by letting those who can afford it pay for and select the art that is placed in public land. It's not accomplished by choosing a commemorative portrait of a political figure. First and foremost, public art should be what is referred to as site-specific. It should be designed to respond to the site where it will be located, the landscape, the architecture, the past and present qualities of the community. It should enhance how one experiences the site, and the site should give added dimension to the artwork. The artwork should use a visual language that reveals something to the viewer that could not be communicated by other means. It can be poetic, metaphorical, subtle, bold, challenging, inspiring, beautiful, and joyous. But it is rare that a commemorative portrait is any of those things, because a sculptor making a portrait has a different purpose and motivation than an artist that is inspired by the site and trying to communicate fresh and provocative aesthetic ideas. So how do we ensure that this wonderful opportunity with a new park, whether it's the Castaways, or next to the city hall, our new city hall, one of our most important civic projects to date, how do we ensure that we have a process to get the best public art available? I'd like to finish if I could.
You may.
We should adopt a proven process used by so many other cities in California and around the United States. Newport Beach is way behind so many other cities in this regard. I've been living here for 35 years waiting for it to happen, and we are missing out on the considerable benefits to our citizens and businesses by not having an active viable public art program, either in the form of a present-for-the-art program, or at least an established process for selecting art for our civic projects. A committee should be established with members from the Arts Commission, from the landscape architectural firm for whichever park we're talking about, with several arts professionals, probably from our outstanding art museum, and a representative from the community. This community should establish a budget and publish an RFQ, which means a request for qualifications. That RFQ should be widely circulated to artists in Southern California or even beyond. From the responses to the RFQ, the committee should choose finalists to develop proposals for artwork for the park. Public comment could be solicited, if desired, on the submitted proposals, and the committee can make its final selections and recommendations to the city council for approval. This would be an open, democratic, and professionally-run selection process that would provide Newport Beach with wonderful art for all these beautiful parks. Thank you.
Joan Templeton-Morris. And I really want to thank you for the privilege of addressing you this evening. I am the vice president of the Women's Democratic Club in Newport Beach, and I really want to say, as a citizen, it's a privilege, and I thank you for that privilege. I think it's wonderful. I have a dream, I really do have a dream for this city. I heard at the meeting at the Arts Council that you were thinking about a sculpture garden around the new city hall. What a wonderful idea. You've got the most beautiful city here. You have beautiful symbolism all around you. You have a wonderful harbor, you have sailing, you have all the sea life. Can you imagine a beautiful sculpture garden around city hall that expresses and symbolizes Newport Beach? That's what I'm asking you to think about. That would be just a place everybody would want to go to. It's close to shopping there, you could walk through it, you'd have a wonderful time seeing all the beautiful sculpture and the landscape around it, and it would symbolize the city. I speak from experience. I've lived in Newport Beach for five years, and I certainly have enjoyed it, but for 20 years, I lived in your sister city, Huntington Beach, and I was privileged to serve on the Design Review Board there for many, many years. And maybe some of you have driven down PCH, and you've seen the surfer with the wave, the bronze. I had a little bit to do with that. And then if you've been to Huntington Beach City Hall, they had a Seacliff Shopping Center, and had beautiful sculptures of seabirds, all kinds of seabirds, and the citizens bought those sculptures and donated them to the city. And now if you walk into Huntington Beach City Hall, you see those beautiful birds up on tall pylons, and it all surrounds the city hall.
up on tall pylons, and it all surrounds the City Hall, and it represents our beautiful sea life and the birds of our sea life. I urge you to think about, really, the future of your City Hall and what you surround it with, and make it a beautiful place that symbolizes your city. You have a beautiful city. Let's make it a beautiful sculpture garden around the City Hall. Thank you.
My name is Therese Lautherback, and I'm a member of the Newport Harbor Republican Club. I'm very happy to be here, and I was so excited to find out about the statue, I had to say something. I'm not here to debate whether or not the facts are agreed upon by the Democratic Women's Club. No one's going to change anybody's mind here tonight about that, but I do am so excited and enthusiastic about the statue that I just have to say a few words. I don't think that 100 people of another party get to decide what's good for the citizens of Newport Beach. I don't think that the Arts Commission gets to decide what's good for the people of Newport Beach. Let's look at some of the facts, though. President Reagan's approval rate was 63%. That's second highest. That's amazing. His policies in Russia, Eastern Europe, to smash communism are profound. Today Reagan probably is the most quoted president of our time, and why is that? Because his principles were based on our founding fathers, the Constitution. They were based on low taxes, free market, less government, don't spend what you don't have, and let's use your hands to work and not take out, not take handouts. If these policies were adhered to by our current president, I don't think our country would be on the verge of possible bankruptcy. And Newport Beach is Reagan country, with 56% Republicans as 34% more Republicans than Democrats. Newport Beach is Goldwater country. Newport Beach is John Wayne country. Newport Beach is conservative county. What about Ronald Reagan? He's a Californian. He's ours. He was governor of California. He later retired in LA, and his office was in Century City. His ranch was in San Marcos. His library in Simi Valley. This library, and I looked it up, is the second-most-visited presidential library in the United States, and 100,000 people were there for his funeral. He left a legacy in California, in the Western United States, and in all of America. We love him so much. He's our president. He's our hero. He's an icon. He's a man of the ages. He'll go down in history as one of our country's best and finest presidents, and he belongs in the Civic Center, because it's a place of government, because he governed our country so fine. And if not at the Civic Center, where? And if not now, when? To do so is for the greater good of Newport Beach and all the citizens who will follow us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Bonnie O'Neill, and I'm a longtime resident of Newport Beach, probably, I don't know, I don't even want to say it's that long, a long time, most of my life. I am very much in favor of the statue, and the reasons that I am is that some of the reasons that I've heard, I'd like to talk about. One of them is whether it's appropriate for it to be a statue of a politician or an elected official, but that's what City Hall is all about. It's not about anything except politics. So it seems appropriate, and if you go to Washington, D.C., that's what you see. You see statues of our elected officials. And I believe Ronald Reagan is an excellent example for us, because he was both our governor, our president. He's the one who lived here. We don't often get a president that represents California as much as he did. But I think that one of the things that we have to understand is that he was and is a popular president. The poll was cited that he, but what is interesting is that Gallup has had a poll for the last 12 years, asking who people consider as the greatest president, not most popular, but greatest president, and there are three that have gotten the top three each time, Lincoln, Reagan, and Kennedy. Reagan was the top-getter in 2001, 2005, and interestingly enough, just voted for 2011. That poll was conducted not for just Republicans, but by Democrats, independents, and Republicans. He's respected by men and women of all parts of our lives. Regarding the statue that somebody mentioned, the person that was talking about pieces of art, I think that somebody that sees a statue of Ronald Reagan, I think that does evoke feelings that she was talking about. I don't know of another person, if I think of somebody that's been a champion of freedom, and I think that's why governments around the world respect Ronald Reagan, as well as a lot of people, because he is the one that brought down that Berlin Wall. He is the one who put a stop to the Cold War. He stands for freedom, and that's what our country stands for. Somebody else mentioned, the first speaker mentioned, all of the reasons she didn't approve of Ronald Reagan. Now, I understand she's a Democrat, but I wanted to, just to mention, if I could, just one of the things that came to mind when she was talking about the Keating Five scandal. And I remember that very well, because Alan Cranston, who was a Democrat, was represented some, he was from our area, so we had a lot of publicity about it. During that time, I don't know how Ronald Reagan could have interfered. It was actually, it was a federal issue, and it was, we had, there were commissions that were authorized by the federal government, didn't have anything to do with the state government, but the most important thing there is that it was Democrats that, basically, the committee found as having problems. So I don't, I don't really know how that tied in with their dislike for Reagan. But I do know one thing. This was a great man, and I think that honoring him, especially in our, in California, is appropriate, and I think especially for Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. My name is Kim Yansma, and I've been a resident of Newport Beach for over 20 years, and in fact, I live in the area near the Castaways Park. And I want to talk about the proposal of putting up the statue of Reagan, perhaps in the Castaways Park instead of the Civic Center, and I want to let you know that I am completely against that idea. First, I think it's really important to note that we're talking about public land, and I don't think it's fair that people who happen to be able to raise money can put up a statue to their liking, any art to their liking, without going through another review process for the citizens of Newport Beach. That's our land. It's not the people's land that put up, that gathered the money to put up the statues. In terms of Castaways Park, I'm very attached to that park, number one, because it's near my home, and I run at Castaways Park just about every morning, and number two, because I actually worked with a group of citizens of this city to try to save Castaways Park when the whole thing was going to be developed, and we fought very hard to say, we wanted to save the whole thing, but we're happy with what was worked out and the part we did save. I actually go to Castaways Park for what I call my meditation runs in the morning, when I'm feeling any kind of stress, or I really want to pray and quiet my thought. There's nothing better than the height of that beautiful view and the most beautiful vistas we have in Newport Beach overlooking the bay and the ocean. And I was really alarmed when, one day I went on my regular walk, and I saw a statue of a Marine there with a gun and a fearful look in his eye, and all ready for combat. Now, that blocks one of the most beautiful, serene, peaceful views available up there at Castaways Park, and it's really not fitting. Now, however one feels about, you know, honoring our Marines, or the Iraq War, whatever, some private citizens were allowed, who, I don't know what, why they decided to put it there, to put that statue there, that basically changes the entire peaceful tenor of that Castaways Park. And I basically work now, when I go there, to try to block it from view, because it's not, it's fairly disturbing. It's a fairly violent statue. I don't think that it makes sense that people want to make a statue of whoever. Obviously, Ronald Reagan is still a controversial figure. To just put him in Castaways Park for those of us who want to enjoy that park, it doesn't really, it's not art that fits that beautiful, serene, natural environment. And so most of all, I want to see this going through a democratic review process and not to have private money going to decide where art's going to go in our public space. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Please.
My name is Al Frank, and I'm a citizen of Newport Beach, very much a patriotic American, and I was at the meeting with the Arts Commission. I suddenly thought to myself about how Custer might have felt in his last stand with regard to opposition. And I was somewhat surprised by that, because I thought, quite frankly, quite naively, that everybody loved Ronald Reagan as an American president, and I thought, could we not see the good in all that? Are we so wrong that individual viewpoints can cover up the greatness of individuals? Otherwise, we'll never have anybody great, because we don't have humans that are not flawed. That seems to be a fact. I think Obama gets it. He signed into law a nonpartisan centennial commission, which is only 10 times in American history has anyone ever done that, and to honor our president, Ronald Reagan and our 40th president. California Legislature created a California Commission in 2010 to honor the president. Our U.S. Postal Commission just brought out a stamp to honor a president. How is it that we can do all these things for somebody that didn't accomplish much or mean much to the greater mass? There are always people that'll be able to find the flaws. I listened to the previous speaker about the intimidating statue of a Marine, as opposed to my view, where I look at it with inspiration, and I look at Ronald Reagan, who was one of the most inspiring individuals, a time in my life when I felt really special about being an American. I'm also Hispanic. I was born in Mexico, and I looked at Ronald Reagan and the fact that he, this issue with immigration, and the fact that he signed into law the amnesty that allowed 2.5 million Mexican-Americans to become citizens. You can talk about the merits of the individual, and you can talk about the detractions, but at the end of the day, my business view is that you look at everything from a macro standpoint, and overall, was this a great American? Does he belong in any place? Where we can look at individuals of that type, whether it's Ronald Reagan, Abraham Lincoln, or Martin Luther King, who all happened to be Republicans. That is a fact. And with that, I just think, I look at people with a bipartisan viewpoint. I would welcome a Martin Luther King statue, because I think he did great things. So my point is, is that, is there any American that's ever going to be great enough to hold a place in a park where we can look at them with inspiration? And if not, then we should probably never have anybody, because we'll always find flaws and individual viewpoints that will be important to ourselves. At some point, we need to look at the broader picture and say, where would be the majority vote? If you put this vote to all of Newport Beach, would the vote at that point in time, if it were to get on some ballot, say, I'm in favor of it, or I'm against it? And I would be willing and happy to let that be the deciding factor. I do believe in the silent majority, not the loud minority, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you for having the opportunity to speak my piece.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ron Hendrickson, and I've lived here almost 40 years. I don't think that makes any difference, because I think if you've only lived here five years, you have just as much right to say what you think as if you've lived here I think that agreeing to locate the statue in Castaways Park was very good. I think that's a good solution for the location, and we already have a statue there, and I think that reduces a good amount of this controversy. I really am bothered by the use of the Marine statue, putting together that deal, which violated our policy I-9. The city, if, you know, most people in this audience, I'm sure, don't know what I-9 is. It's a very thorough policy on how to accept and deal with art in this city, and my original request here was to help ensure that you do follow I-9, and I certainly am supportive of Councilman Rosansky, who's given a very logical position, I think, and that's what I would like to see happen. That I-9 has been in effect for almost 30 years, and to turn it upside down now and allow a group of donors, because they've given the money, to determine the art of this piece of work seems to me very inappropriate. Many years ago, a lot of us supported our new library, and we gave substantially to that, but did we ever think that we would have any input into the design of the library? No. And I really don't think people that have donated money for this statue really think that they have the right to determine artistically what this statue's going to be. Probably, the majority of them are not knowledgeable in this area, anyway. So I really hope you reconsider that aspect of this thing, and certainly, I think the donors could be involved with the Arts Commission and have their say and give their opinions, but to give the donors the final say, I think, is just very, very bad. Anyway, I think that all I'd like to conclude with is, let's not overturn longtime city policy on just one issue. It's a very emotional issue, I realize that, but I don't think we need to change our whole city life because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jean Witty, and I do hope the Council will take note of all the people that did speak, and that they will notice, can't help it, the tremendous diversity, whether it was Republicans or Democrats. There was diversity, and I think when we're talking about something so public, we may have to give an edge to everyone, and in particular, maybe the minority. We've already heard Democrats are the minority in this town, but there are a fair amount of people, they're really upset by a But there are a fair amount of people that are really upset by a, not Reagan, but a partisan politician's statue. It doesn't matter who or what. I doubt that any of us would say, hey, put up Kennedy, hey, put up this one. You disenfranchise us. I mean, I'm going to walk in that place to pay my taxes, and I'm going to go past somebody I really didn't like. That doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you like him and I don't. The important thing is that I'm an individual in this town, and I'm on, quote, "my land." And I don't think you should put something so partisan when there's been so much complaint. And it doesn't matter if out of 100% of the population, there are only 25% of us that don't like it. We don't have to win the vote. It's just, if we're decent, we don't, we just don't insult the minority. That's number one. The second thing is, I think, and I hope for the future, that when you pick an artist to do anything for this city, that you go for, really, for better caliber. There is an awful lot of good art in Southern California, and that's where we should be throwing our time and our money. And the third thing is exactly what this gentleman said. If you pay for it, it doesn't mean you can choose it. That didn't happen in Lincoln Center.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, I see a show of hands. How many more people will be wanting to make comments? Just a few. You might want to start edging your way down to the podium here. Go, Bob.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm Bob Shelton. I'm a 56-year resident of Newport Beach. I'll read from my notes, if I may. Some city, sometimes a city council faces a tough decision on a controversial matter with wide public interest. I understand your problem. I have sat where you are sitting. With regard to the issue before you, first of all, I'm pleased that Councilmember Curry has opened the door somewhat to a discussion of options, different than what you originally acted upon. But I respectfully differ on matters of process up to now. With regard to the issue before you, let's face it. So far, the decision process has been a series of failures. Failure to provide for timely public notice and opportunity for public comment. Failure to follow the Council's own rules for selection and placement of art in public places. Failure to engage local talent to assist the process. Failure to recognize that by California law, you occupy a nonpartisan office. The results, the results are overly divided public reactions to these failures. This is not the way to do the public's business in Newport Beach. I suggest that it is time to slow down, step back, and consider a different course of action. Either abandon a proposal that is full of problems, or start over and do it right. Thank you. By the way, I'm a Republican.
My name is Anita Meister Boyd, and I wasn't going to speak, but I feel compelled. I have lived with my husband for 35 years in Newport Beach. We moved here as newlyweds and right out of graduate school. And those first couple of years were kind of scary, because friends around me and my company that I worked for were being let go. And interest rates had soared to 18%. And all of a sudden, there were hostages in Iran, and it looked like the world was coming to an end. These were newlyweds. And then President Reagan was elected, and he showed us a different way to look at life in terms of just putting your head down and getting the work done, building your careers. And he gave us hope and optimism. And so, when I look at him, I don't look at him so much as a political figure, as much as what he gave to me and my husband, and what I hope that we've conveyed to our children in terms of that hope and optimism, which is still alive today. And so, I would very much like to see him commemorated in Newport Beach. For those who disagree, I invite them to come up with a statue, get together some private funds, and do the same thing. You've given them that option. I think it's wonderful, and I think it's nice to have discourse on both sides in that regard. And I want to say that I absolutely love Newport Beach. We are so blessed to have such wonderful leaders who have taken such good care of our city. And to me, Newport Beach is that shining city on a hill.
By the bay, I believe.
My name is Carrie Slayback. I have lived in Newport Beach also many years. When I was preparing to come tonight, I got a call from a friend, Annie. She said, where are you going? And I told her, and she said, I'm a Republican, and I'm against that statue. I'd be mad as hell if they were going to make an Obama statue in this town. And I said, Annie, that's not the point. But listening, maybe it is the point. Because I don't think it's correct to have a statue put in our town simply because people can pay for it. In my past few years, I have been lucky enough to run marathons in many big cities, the most recent of which was Chicago. In Chicago, I fell in love with the public art. It was really unifying. Has anybody here seen the fog, the Cloud Bank? Yeah. And it is a beautiful statue that you can see yourself reflected in. Also, you can see the beautiful Chicago skyline. And everybody there becomes a part of that art, and also a part of enjoying the architecture of the Chicago skyline. That is public art to me. I would like to end by making an alternate suggestion for the funding. I'm a retired public school teacher. I really respect the Office of the President. I would love to see in the library a place where young people could study the Office of the President, all the Presidents. I know a lot of teachers tell our students, you can be President, and what's more, I'll vote for you. I would love to see a place in our libraries where money is spent for biography, analysis of the Presidents, and particularly President Reagan, because I know there are citizens committed to him. And that would be a place where we wouldn't be looking at a statue, but we would be valuing the thinking of the Office, the greatest Office in our land. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeanne Beek. Now, I hadn't planned to speak, but I got inspired. And the thing that I would like to remind you is that these are nonpartisan offices that you hold as Councilmen. And I know how hard you work at it and try to keep it nonpartisan. And so, I just came up to second the suggestion that Nancy Gardner put forth, and it seems to me that Stephen Rosansky mentioned, of taking a step backward and looking at this again and respecting the requirements and the rules that you've already set forth. Thank you.
My name is Novelle Hendrickson, and I'm here in support of the Arts Commission. And I was a member of the Arts Commission in the 80s. And I know the Arts Commission does so much work for the city, and I'm surprised that this Council is not, is putting them in a very bad position, as if you don't think they can do it. They have so many good rules. They have so many good people who know about art. And the very idea that that's not important for you as a Council, I'm really sad if that, if we can't even have a dual motion or something to provide that the Arts Commission take charge of this in A-9, that is your city policy. And that's what everyone seems to forget here. They're worrying about if it's Reagan or if it's going to be somebody else. That's not important at this time. It's going to be Reagan, obviously, because Mr. Curry has, you know, said so. So, let's just go from there. And he's given some slack here for us, that it'll be at another park. And let's let the Arts Commission do their work. They do a good job. Look at all the things they do for the city. And I think it's really an insult to them that you would stand up there and no one would second something about A-9. Thank you very much.
Please, please. Do we have any further comment? Well, he was leaving. Is there anybody that would care to make a comment on this? All right. Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to Council for further discussion and consideration of the motion. Councilman Gardner?
I basically reinforced what I came in sort of feeling. The fact that this is not, this is supposed to be apolitical, all the comments I heard just emphasized the fact that it's a very political decision. I mean, so well, if our, you know, if the current President would follow his policies, well, we're setting ourselves up very divisively there. So I do think that that is an issue. It seems to me that if we've got private donors, private donors, you can raise all the money you want, and you can do anything you want, and put it on private property. But if we're going to do it on public property, then they don't get to say, who makes the decision? We do have policies in place, and we should follow those policies. And, but I, as I say, the reason I didn't support the alternative motion was I wasn't even sure that we should go that far at this point. I just really have a problem putting something like this on public property when there is, and I don't care whether it's a majority or a very significant minority. One of the benefits of, one of the strengths of a democracy is that you protect the rights of the minority, as well as going along with the majority with their vote. So I really have some issues with this, and I would again say, maybe we need to take a step back and just sort of begin the process over with more public input. That's where I'm standing so far.
Councilmember Curry, we haven't heard from you in a while.
I've gotten a second wind, Mr. Mayor. But I'll be much shorter, but I'll be much shorter this time.
I hope a much more succinct wind than the last one.
Absolutely. First of all, I want to thank the audience, both the supporters and the opponents. I think it was a very thoughtful debate here, and it's a much more pleasant experience for me to sit through, certainly in the Arts Commission the other night. I appreciate your comments. I hope that you've tried to take away that by changing the location of where we're going to put this, and by focusing on President Reagan's accomplishments as a person who brought freedom to the world, let's leave aside what happened on domestic policy, a man who brought freedom to the world. I mean, that's something that I think unites us as Americans. Now, as to the process, I think the motion that I've introduced gives the Arts Commission the opportunity to input into the process. But I think quite candidly, we've heard why it's important that the donors sort of be involved, because they've already given the money without knowing where the final product is going to be. And to be quite candid, I don't think they want the metaphysical Reagan. I don't think they want the provocative Reagan, or the 21st century Reagan. I think we need to let Reagan be Reagan, which is why you want people who have an affection for the President to be responsible for this. Now, I do agree with people who say that we ought to have high-quality art. Questions were raised about the artist who came forward and provided a maquette. We're going to open this up to anybody who is a qualified artist who would like to submit, and we welcome their submittal, and we welcome the Arts Commission's help in finding people to submit. So I think it's going to be a very open, a very competitive process. It's going to be almost identical if we substitute the donor committee for the project committees that we had for the Marines Memorial and the Centennial in terms of process. And I think it will move us forward without creating a situation where our Arts Commission is going to get themselves sideways with the donors and sideways with the City Council and create more controversy down the line. So I appreciate, again, your comments tonight. Thank you.
Counsel, Councilman Zalich?
Yeah. Well, it seems like we've heard comments tonight that either you're for the Reagan statue or against the Reagan statue, or you have a concern about the process. And in terms of the process, the, you know, this is like, this thing has gotten so politicized over the last few weeks that I think that adhering to the established process, we've probably gone too far on this whole issue. The, it's kind of like making sausage. It isn't pretty. And I think we're at the point where this Council needs to make a decision on this, and either we move ahead or we don't move ahead with it. But to go through some process where we go back and revisit other policies that conveniently we've ignored in the past, the last two major art projects we've had in the city, and then institute that process for this project, because it's become politicized, I don't think is the right way to go. So I'm in support of Councilman Curry's motion, and the, you know, I just feel it's the right thing to do and move ahead and just get this behind us. I think to take and drag the process out is just going to drag out the politicization of it, and I don't think that serves the city well.
Councilmember Daigle?
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's sort of the politicization of this that's made it difficult for the Council. And I know that you've elected all of us to address local issues, you know, our fiscal restraint, our economic revitalization, our stewardship of the bay, containing the airports. This has been really, for the work of our Council in the months ahead, a very sort of distraction of something that we've had to deal with. I think we're really trying to find a practical and reasonable solution. So it's not going in the civic center. We heard that loud and clear from people, both Republicans and Democrat. And so I think our solution is a serious effort at quieting this down. So I think that's kind of where the, I don't know, maybe the mayor can chime in, is where do you think we're, what we're trying to do here?
I'm giving deference to my fellow Councilmembers for any further comments before I comment. Councilman Rosansky?
Well, I'll be brief. I made my motion earlier, didn't get a second. Sorry that happened. I guess my feelings are, this is public art, and we're putting it in a public place, and we have a public process for doing such a thing. And, you know, there's a right way to do things, and there's a wrong way. And I firmly believe that this is the wrong way to do them. You know, later on, if you folks want to stick around in our agenda, we're going to be talking about committees and groups that we're basically looking to do away with or restructure. Well, we might as well add the Arts Commission to the list, because if we're going to ignore our policies that we set up, we have an Arts Commission, but we don't use the Arts Commission for what they're set up to do. So we might as well just add them to the list. So when that issue comes up, I'm just going to make a motion that we add the Arts Commission to the list, because it just doesn't make sense to have an Arts Commission. Doesn't make sense to have Council Policy I-9 or I-11. If we are, as a lot of people here said, we're going to just let people buy their way into our city parks or public places. I support the statue. It has nothing to do with the statue, but I support the process as well. And I think that's what's being lost here, is that it's being railroaded through, you know? And if that's the way we want to run our city, then let's move forward and take our vote.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, maybe, for the city attorney. It's not quite clear to me that our process is somehow being bypassed. When I looked at I-9 under D, it says that the Arts Commission is recommending capacity. You know, they don't have final say to buck stops with the City Council. So I'm a little bit unclear about how folks really feel that we are bypassing our policy.
Where angels fear to tread. The policy is, the Arts Commission clearly has a recommendatory role with respect to arts, but also your policy states that a donation of art to the city must have a majority agreement within the
majority agreement within the Arts Commission prior to making a recommendation to the city council. Your policy clearly considers the fact it goes to the Arts Commission first before it actually goes to the council. That having been said, the council is the, is the author of the policy as it is with all of its other policies and it's fully within its discretion to choose other routes to bring to it. Staff certainly doesn't have that discretion, but council does.
Okay. Well, I guess my point is the, the core charge here seems to be that we're bypassing a policy and it's not clear to me that we are doing that.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll, I'll chime in for a minute or so here. We live in an imperfect world. The proposal as originally made was an imperfect proposal and the solution that's before us is an imperfect solution. On the other hand, um, I think it is a solution that is a reasonable one, given the circumstances, because in fact, um, it does not call for the donor committee, as I understand it, and I want to clarify this, to be making the final selection. The final selection is to be made by the city manager and in fact, with the advice, should they choose to give it, of the Arts Commission and with the advice of the donor committee and with the advice of the Parks Committee, if we choose to solicit that advice as well, and it's, it is to be given. And so, I don't regard this as a, a conclusion that impunes the integrity or the purpose of the Arts Commission or the Parks Commission or any of those groups. I really don't. I, I see it as a modification of the process, as imperfect as it may be, and I think on the whole, a reasonable one, where there will be a selection of artists to be considered and the donor committee won't make the final decision and there will be advice and recommendation from the commissions involved. It may not be the way we ordinarily might have started the process, but we are where we are and I do think we should conclude the process here tonight. So, with that, um, is there any other comment from council? In that event, I would like to vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky and Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Portem Gardner voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much for everyone that took the time to come down here and impart their comments. If I can please request people to go ahead and exit the council chambers, please, and continue your conversations outside. We do have a long agenda yet to complete this evening. Not yet. Okay. I think we are back on our regular agenda and the next agenda item is item number 12, the Prez Office Building. And do we have a staff report for that?
Yes, Associate Planner Janet Brown will provide that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Prez Office Building project site is located in the airport area of the general plan land use element. In this location here at 4300 Von Karman. This is near the intersection of Von Karman Avenue and MacArthur Boulevard, right here. And the site was originally developed back in the 1970s as a restaurant with the associated onsite parking. In 2005, the building was renovated and converted from a restaurant use to an office use, which has a less intense parking requirement, resulting in a surplus of parking spaces. Uh, what did I do? There we go, okay. The applicant proposes to develop a new 11,960 gross square foot office building consisting of two levels of office space over a ground level parking structure. The new building would be located in approximately this location, um, to the east of the existing office building. In order to implement the project, the applicant is requesting to amend the general plan land use element to increase the development limit by approximately 11,544 gross square feet. They are requesting to amend the Cole Center Newport Plan Community text to increase the allowable building area by 9,917 net square feet. They are requesting approval of a tentative parcel map to subdivide approximately 55,000 square foot parcel into two separate parcels. They are requesting exceptions to the Cole Center Newport PC development standards to allow a site area of less than 30,000 square feet and to lower the parking requirement of one space for each 225 net square feet to one space for each 250 net square feet of office area. Finally, they are requesting a waiver of the requirement for a development agreement. The Planning Commission reviewed this project and the associated applications in August, on August 5th and August 19th, 2010, and voted to recommend approval of the project. During the public hearings, the Planning Commission also reviewed the mitigated negative declaration, which was prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. At each of the public hearings and during the public review period, comment letters were submitted by an adjacent property owner expressing opposition to the project and raising a variety of issues regarding the adequacy of the mitigated negative declaration. An errata was prepared to address modifications made to the mitigated negative declaration related to the issues that were raised in the letters. The new information in the errata was provided to clarify and augment the evaluation in the draft SEQA document. No new significant environmental impacts were identified based on the additional evaluation and the conclusions in the mitigated negative declaration remained unchanged. Based on the analysis in the mitigated negative declaration, all potentially significant impacts to the environment can be mitigated to a level of less than significant with mitigation measures, which are included in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is also attached to your staff report. Following the Planning Commission hearings, the applicant met with the adjacent property owner to discuss their concerns regarding the project. We have since been informed that the two parties have reached an agreement and the adjacent property owner has agreed to withdraw their challenges to the project and the mitigated negative declaration. Per Charter Section 423 and the guidelines that are provided in council policy A18, city council is required to review general plan amendments to determine if voter approval is required. As indicated in the staff report, the proposed amendment does not exceed any of the three thresholds that would require a vote of the project if it is approved. The project is located in the airport environs land use planning area and requires review by the Airport Land Use Commission for determination of consistency. At the October 21st, 2010 meeting, the commission voted unanimously to approve the project. Development agreements are required per general plan policies or they're also required per chapter 1545 of the municipal code. This chapter states that development agreements are required with city approval of general plan amendments or other legislative acts that are located in the airport area and include non-residential development. This chapter also includes a provision that city council may waive the requirement for a development agreement if it finds one of the following items: that the legislative act is of a minor nature, or that the project provides significant public benefits to the city, or the nature of the project is such that neither the city nor the developer would benefit from a development agreement. The applicant has provided facts in support of these findings, which are included in the staff report. Staff believes the findings can be made and recommends that the requirement for a development agreement be waived. In conclusion, staff recommends that city council adopt a resolution which approves the environmental document, the general plan amendment, the parcel map, exceptions to the Cole Center Newport PC development standards, and waive the development agreement. And finally, staff recommends that council introduce an ordinance approving an amendment to the Cole Center Newport Plan Community and pass it to a second reading on March 8th. That concludes my presentation. We're available to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Gardner?
Um, some time ago, I mentioned that I really liked Planning Commission minute meeting, Planning Commission meeting minutes because they often had information that then I didn't have to ask the question and they had gotten shorter and shorter and terser and terser. And I was told there'd be more fulsome minutes. And I see you rifling through their city manager and I can assure you, I riffled through three times and could not find any minutes at all. So, I have to go over some of these questions because I don't know what the Planning Commission essentially said. I looked at the letter from the neighbor, the attorney's neighbor, and now that they've agreed with it, it's not so important. But I still have a couple of questions. Are we sure that we aren't piecemealing this area up here? I mean, it seems to me that we're playing both sides against the middle here. We say at one point that this makes the jobs housing relationship good because we're going to have some residential down the road, but then we don't count that residential, that future residential in for, say, traffic projections and that sort of thing. So, it's, we use it when we, we think it's going to help and we don't use it. And it, it almost seems like we're cheerleading and trying to get this process approved, whereas it seems to me that staff's role is to present us with a very matter-of-fact, very neutral view of the development. Staff says it's a benefit because it'll provide additional tax revenues. Oh, gosh, me. Anything we build probably provides additional tax revenues, particularly build it on a park or something. I mean, it doesn't seem very neutral and I think if I were someone who were opposed to the project, and I don't think that there probably is much opposition, but if I were opposed, I would feel that the deck was very much stacked against me. And so, then when I did come to something that raised a question about piecemealing, I would wonder how we would justify that. Because as I say, we've got all, this is our second amendment in what, two months to the general plan up there? We just keep adding a little bit, a little bit here, and yet we're very careful to stay under the, the green light. But the reason, history lesson, the reason green light was generated was not because of city policies, it was because of the sense that city policies were being jettisoned all the time and not followed. And so, this is a, this is a concern I have. So, the, the argument about piecemealing, at least. I'll forget the rest of the letter, but I would like that addressed.
Well, that letter was issued many months ago, so I can't necessarily have all the points in my mind on this, but, you know, in terms of piecemealing this, I think the argument was is that there's two projects side by side and we've done evaluations separately. Um, you know, we did the environmental review for the Prez project as a separate environmental document. It did take into account these other projects, not at, on a project level basis, but, you know, programmatically, we looked at each one, we looked at what the additive traffic would be, so we felt that we addressed both projects on a cumulative level. Now, this project doesn't really, there isn't another project down the pipe that's coming that we haven't evaluated that's associated with this project. So, we don't feel that we deferred any analysis whatsoever. No, we don't.
You don't think that the coal project, the residential project is something down the road?
Well, it is, but it's not associated with this project and that project will require its own environmental review and EIR, actually. We're preparing two EIRs for the connection.
So, is that a different area in terms of traffic projections and everything? Or will this, will these figures then impact theirs down the road?
The, the effects of this project will be included in that analysis so that we get a full and complete picture of, of what the true impact will be when that project comes forward.
Okay. Well, anyway, as I say, since the, since the neighbor doesn't care anymore, I guess I shouldn't be caring very much either about that.
But, but actually, I care about it because I think your points are, are very valid in that these significant benefits that are being articulated are really not significant. As a matter of fact, they work against the project. For example, jobs housing ratio. Newport Beach is rich in jobs and we're penalized in our regional housing needs assessment allocations because we're rich in jobs and they, you know, the regional planning authorities say you, you need more houses. So, to add commercial works against our jobs housing ratio. Secondly, with regards to the, the taxes, I attended the assessors briefing and the number one area in our city where we have vulnerability and exposure is devaluation of commercial in the airport business area. So, these significant benefits, which, which were not articulated by staff, by the applicant, I, I don't see those as significant benefits. Now, there may be others, but I think part of the policy question here is that some weeks ago, I went to battle for the WPI project because it provided a benefit to the city. It was a significant visual upgrade to a gateway of our city at Campus and Jamboree. Does this project have enough public benefit that we want to use our surplus general plan allocation on this project? Again, it's a policy question. I look forward to everyone's input. Or do we in fact want to reserve that down the line and conserve it for potentially a better project? So, that's really the, the policy question because this development has essentially been created out of whole cloth. They've taken a parking lot and now creating a building pad. And then secondly, is the square footage is, is, you know, not, wasn't in our general plans of 2006. So, that's the policy question. Does this project merit us using that square footage or should we conserve it for another project potentially down the line?
Other comments from council? Councilman Gardner?
Um, I was also concerned about, we're getting, I, these are these nebulous areas that we're trying to wade our way through nowadays, but the greenhouse gas issue. I mean, anything we build obviously contributes to greenhouse gases, but there are things we can do to mitigate. And here what we're doing is I gather we're removing trees. I got that from the, we're not going to remove them when the birds are nesting. Well, that's fine, but trees are one way you mitigate the impacts of greenhouse gases. So, it seems if we're removing trees for the construction, if we go, go ahead with the construction, we need to replace at least that many trees on the property, whether it's in the parking areas or along the medians. And the other thing is if we, again, if we do proceed with this, the last project, we didn't have a development agreement, but we did have some additional benefits to the city and I think that's something that we should also discuss.
Councilman Selic?
Yeah, well, just in response to the piecemealing thing, I think staff identified it correctly that, that really when you're changing the general plan and adding something, you're looking at the cumulative impacts. We had already analyzed on a general plan level, the, the coal and the connection areas as part of the general plan and this has no direct relationship to those projects. Those were analyzed as part of that. Now, we're adding something to the general plan, so you look at the cumulative aspects. And so, they did it properly in this and, um, that's the, you know, that's, that's, that's the way you do it when you have a general plan amendment and you're adding something to an existing general plan. So, I, I think it was properly done.
Councilman Daigle? Did you have another? Okay.
No, I, I did want to get some feedback as to whether, you know, the council believes that this project merits the use or we want to wait for something down the line.
Well, I, I would, I would like to pen that until we hear from the applicant in the event the applicant wishes to make any comments, but, uh, Councilman Hill, did you have any?
I would just note that I visited the site to walk it and, and take a look at it and I think it's a very unique site. It certainly has more open space than almost any other site I'd ever been on. So, I think they adequately addressed the quality of environment that I certainly enjoy in Newport. I am very impressed with the buildings that are on the site. They're actually very much architectural jewels, I would say. And, and the fact that the use of one of the existing buildings on the site has been reduced. And, and the fact that the use of one of the existing buildings on the site has been reduced in use, that the parking, and I don't look at that, I mean, it's not a waiver of parking at all. It's a change of use and the appropriate parking applied to that particular use. And I've looked at the architecture of the building that they're proposing, and I think all of that works. I think it would be an enhancement to that area, and I don't think it would really detract from the open space of the area.
Okay. Is, is the applicant here, and would the applicant care to make a statement?
Hi, good evening. Karen Martin with Pacific Planning Group, representing Pres. And I do have some handouts that just give some photographs of the site and also follow along with my notes. Before starting my presentation, I'd like to just address some of the comments. And if my presentation needs to be cut short, this way I'm addressing your comments first. With regard to the piecemealing, we did take that into consideration. We looked, and there was a discussion at the planning commission hearing especially about the traffic. And one of the, the notes that we, one of the statements that I made was that the traffic was looked at, both the WPI project and our project together, so that there was not a sense that we would be overstepping our bounds per the measure S. With regards to the trees, one of the comments from the opposition was a concern over a very large eucalyptus tree. And in the concessions that we talked about with the opposition, we've, we've agreed to reorient the building in such a manner that those trees would be saved to the best of our ability. And they said that they would be okay with that. There's also an opportunity for the opposition to look at those, those changes during the design period, which is going to be a review period by the Coal Company, by the Architectural Committee. That being said, we would agree to a condition if there are trees removed that we would replace in-like trees. With regards to the public benefits on this project, I think I'm going to defer to my presentation. It's addressed in the presentation. And I think most of your comments are addressed in my presentation, and I'd be happy to expand on those.
What do you consider to be the public benefits?
I, the, I, I believe that Councilman Rush actually made a, a very, very nice observation. These, these buildings are jewels in the area. You have an opportunity to have a developer and a property owner develop, not to the full extent that they can develop at the cheapest cost, but you have a member of your community, Brad Shroth with Pres, that lives in your community, has kids that have attended schools, has contributed greatly in many aspects of the community, that is going to build a very quality project. This is not going to be a project that is just tilt-up construction, which even though there are design guidelines called out through the Coal Center conditions of approval, I think there's, there's opportunity for interpretation there. And I believe this site, when, when the Pres companies took over this site from Coto, greatly improved the site. And I think the city has an opportunity to have another jewel of a building in this particular location. And that can only benefit all the surrounding, all the surrounding projects, those that are currently there and those that might be there in the future. That being said, Pres, Pres is a real estate service company. The owners live in Newport Beach. They've made numerous contributions to the community and the region, which includes Newport Harbor Junior Basketball, Junior Baseball, Harbor Area Boys and Girls Club. They're also founders of the Newport Elementary School Foundation. These are local residents, local employers, with a long-term view of creating local community benefits. And this project is going to be a benefit for this community. There's an existing building which is about just under 7,000 square feet. As Janet mentioned, we were unanimously approved at the planning commission, and we are also unanimously approved at the Airport Land Use Commission. I think it's important to note that this planning application was submitted in 2007. We have worked tirelessly during these last years to come up with solutions that made everyone happy. We have scaled back the project significantly. We have amended our application to make sure that, that we were in conformance with all the rules, goals, and objectives that were currently in existence. We have also worked with our neighbors to come up with compromises and solutions. The length of time has been significant, however, the time was well-spent. Discussions with neighbors, communities, community leaders, legal counsel, planning staff, and other staff has resulted in a project that, that is supported by staff and is now without any known opposition. The proposed location is in an unused parking area. Most of the development is occurring on asphalt. Very little open space is being taken away. The opportunity to develop on it, on this property allows for underutilized parking to create a new office building. And with the development waiver for parking, we have enough parking for both facilities. I think it's important to clarify that the general plan amendment request is to add 10,433 square foot of development rights. And there's a difference between the 11,960 and the 10,433 because there was a previous building that was demolished, and that we had an extra 416. I also think it's important to note that development rights were on these, on this site in this particular anomaly. Those development rights were transferred over to the area across the street. Those are still remaining. So there were development rights available for this anomaly. Those development rights were transferred in about 2007. With regards to the development agreement, I can address the, the general nature of a development agreement. Typically, a development agreement is one that is used for a phased project. It's not used for a project that's going to be built in one, one phase. This project just requires a building permit. A development agreement is typically used to give both the city and the developer benefits. It's used to hold, hold current rules in place so both the developer and the city can, can provide proper planning for the community. For instance, if you have a residential project, you may be building this residential project in phases. During that, during these phases, there may be a new rule that comes up. For instance, a rule about greenhouse gases or a new building code. If the developer has entered into a development agreement, the developer has vested rights which holds the rights that he or she had entered into in place, so they don't have to redo their pro formas based on those new development codes. The city's own charter states what a major and a minor development agreement are. Charter five, the charter states that a, a general plan amendment that is of a major nature is one that increases non-residential square footage by 40,000 square feet, or it increases the trips, more than 100 trips, or it increases the number of residential units by 100, 100 units. Our proposed project does none of this. In fact, our, our project is less than 15,000. And it may be worth considering policies that give applicants opportunities to determine if, in fact, a development agreement might be necessary. We already talked about some of the public benefits. I'm not going to go through that one again. I think it's important to note that the, the area that is being developed is fully improved. There are no public, there is no public infrastructure that is going to be, no new public infrastructure that's going to be required to accommodate this development. The roads are in, the sidewalks are in. We are aware that staff has added a condition to our conditions of approval to repair the existing sidewalks, and we completely agree with that. I also think it's important to note that the, the use of a development agreement is not typically used for very small-scale projects. And in fact, in looking at the number of projects that have gone through the city, number of general plan amendments that have gone through the city, there have been only very few that have required development agreements. In fact, large-scale projects such as the auto dealership at the corner of MacArthur and Jamboree, which was 119,000 square feet, did not require a development agreement. The Newport Bay Marina added 37,000 feet of non-residential square footage and 37 residential units. It also did not require a development agreement. The Belmar Shopping Center added 56,000 square feet of non-residential. It did not require a development agreement. Most recently, the WPI project was approved with 46,000 square feet added to the project.
Ma'am, will you be very much longer with your presentation?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I, I will conclude my presentation. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any questions from council of the applicant while she's up there? Councilman Rosansky?
I guess, other than to increase the square footage request for the project, what's the need for the parking waiver?
The, the parking waiver, in order to reorient the building and accommodate the, the drive aisle, what we've asked for is a ratio that is similar to the ratio of the rest of the city. The ratio in the rest of the city of Newport Beach is 1 to 250 versus in Planned Center Newport is 1 to 200. So it's, we're only requesting something that is, that is a privilege that is, and a right that's being granted to the rest of the city in terms of parking.
Is that accurate, Mr. Campbell? Are we doing in office-based developments around town, one per 225 now? Is that standard?
Well, the standard in this planned community is 1 to 225 net square footage.
I'm sorry. Repeat that. I'm sorry.
The standard in the Coal Center planned community is 1 to 225. However, in the rest of the community, she's correct, the zoning code provides 1 to 250 square feet, so we're asking for the same consideration that the zoning code would otherwise provide. And staff does support it. We do believe it's an appropriate parking ratio for office.
I'm sorry. So you're saying in the, I guess maybe I'm misreading the report. I thought it was that we were amending the, the requirement for the area from 250 to 225. Is that not accurate?
Yeah, it's, it's not an amendment to the actual planned community text. It's really an exception to provide a lesser parking ratio than what would otherwise be required, so.
So the planned community text requires 250?
No, the planned community text requires 1 to 225, which is slightly more parking.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see. Okay. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from council? All right. Thank you very much. We'll throw this open to public comment. Does anyone wish to make a comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council then for consideration. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to action.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I just would like to have a, as part of the agreement, that, you know, I understand you've reoriented the building so to preserve the trees, but you said, you know, if they can be, that if those trees come down during construction or immediately after construction because of root damage or whatever, that they are, those trees, trees, the number of trees are replaced so that we continue to have carbon dioxide removed from the atmosphere.
Councilman Selig, do you agree to that?
I'll, I'll add that to the motion.
All right.
And everyone is comfortable waiving the development agreement?
Yes. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Motion carries.
If I can turn the pages in my council book, we'll get to the next agenda item.
Lot of pages to turn.
Yeah. All right. We are now on to agenda item number 13, dealing with the adoption of council meeting policies. Do we have a staff report?
Just briefly, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the, this is a follow-up from a report that follows your study session at the last meeting. We addressed all of your changes, except there was a locked vote or a tie vote regarding whether we moved from five minutes to three minutes. We need your direction on that. In addition, there was an error in, in my preparation of the exhibit. There is a portion that should be struck out that I'd left in, and that's at page one of A10. And I had added that and slash/or to request that an item be removed from the consent calendar. Since the council took action to make public comment after the consent calendar, that change is no longer needed and would be removed from any final action that the council takes.
Is that clear to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Do we have a council comment here? Councilman Curry?
Well, I believe the tie occurred because I was absent from the last meeting. I would be on the three-minute side to fill in the blank.
I, I think we saw tonight that three minutes is just, it's almost impossible. I mean, how many times do people run over? And I don't think they were necessarily being, some of them were, but they don't think were being verbose necessarily. It's just hard to do that. We have the option of, when we have a lot of speakers, of saying it'll be three minutes, but I don't, I just think it's very difficult for people to do it in three minutes. I wish we'd keep it at five.
You get, you give them five and they go over. You give them three and maybe you get five.
Well, one thing I've been kind of hearing a lot in the last week, though, because of, you know, efforts to really sort of eliminate certain commissions, is, is this sort of feeling that, you know, maybe we're not soliciting the public as we have in the past. So I think the five-minute is sort of a gesture that we would be, you know, we continue to want their opinions. So I, I think that I have been getting some feedback that, you know, maybe we could be getting a little bit more input from the public.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed changes with the difference that we, on A10, B1 would be five minutes rather than three.
Do I hear a second? A second from Councilman Rosansky?
I would offer a substitute motion to go to three minutes to see whether we are on that, and then we'll decide.
I'll second that.
So we have a substitute motion on the floor to...
So we first have public comment on the substitute motion?
That's what we need to do? Public comment on the substitute motion?
No, that's just...
Okay. Is there any further council comment?
And I think, what do they get, five minutes, right?
Is it? Yeah. Is there any further council comment on the substitute motion? If not, we'll go to the public. All right. Public comment on the substitute motion, which is to maintain a straight-across, three-minute limit on public comment.
That's not to maintain, that's to change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert Hawkins, I live in the city. And I, I believe Councilmember Daigle has put her finger on an important issue. In the goals and policies, I understand that we are trying to be more efficient, and the council is to be congratulated for that. There's too much waste in government. But having said that, the city isn't a company. The city is, and you'll remember, Homer, we serve you. That is, the city serves its residents. It's a, it's a different... It's a different sort of relationship. And part of that relationship is the input, the back-and-forth between the citizens of the community and the council. And this public comment, the opportunity to address you for a period of time, not a brief period of time, but for a period of time, especially on complicated issues such as the Reagan statue, I think are important. And there are going to be more issues coming before you. The banning ranch projects, the dunes project, Coal Conexent, a whole host of projects for which three minutes is going to prove inadequate, period. So I would encourage you to, with all due respect to Councilmember Curry, to vote against the substitute motion and support Councilmember Gardner's original motion. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kiff. So what else should we talk about? I mean, everybody knows I like to talk. I was trying to get it going quickly, but we did have the mayor's dinner, as you know, so thank you very much.
And by the way, thank you for your presiding over that dinner so effectively, Mr. Hawkins. Okay. Any further public comment on this item?
Mayor Hen and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I am also concerned about the proposal to limit public comment. The right of citizens to instruct their representatives may sometimes be painful to the representatives, but it is a very fundamental part of the fabric of American life, and it's a right that is protected by the United States Constitution, the California Constitution, the Brown Act, and our own city charter. Any policy limiting free speech should be enacted only with great caution and for good cause. At the study session two weeks ago, Councilman Rosansky spoke eloquently about the difficulty of administering the proposed rule in which speakers have to rely on the presiding officer to allocate time beyond the three minutes. As he said, not only does that in itself constitute a waste of time, but the rulings will inevitably be perceived as favoring those who have viewpoints agreeing with the presiding officer. And to what Mayor Protam Gardner said, I would like to point out that although the Brown Act permits you to place these limits on public comment, it also explains the reason for doing that is to ensure that in matters where there are many people wanting to speak, as in the item earlier today, that all the people will have an opportunity to speak and that a single matter will not drag on for hours. The present proposal does not seem to be addressing the situation that is envisioned in the Brown Act. So I strongly urge you to leave the standard allocation at five minutes. Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, bring it back to counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one observation before we take the vote. Over my career, I've attended many council and board of supervisor meetings in different jurisdictions, and the trend is either three minutes or five minutes. And I can say that I have not noticed any difference in the quality of public participation in those cities that have the three-minute rule. And I will say this, that I think that many times in the cities that have the three-minute rule, they actually get better quality of presentations because people get used to the fact that it's three minutes and they're forced to be more concise, more accurate, and more direct in their comments because they know they only have three minutes to get it in, so they prepare themselves ahead of time better. So, like I said, I have not observed any difference in the quality of citizen participation in those jurisdictions that have a three-minute rule.
Okay. Before we take a vote, I did want to raise one other small point here. We have decided we're going to allow for public comment on closed-session agenda items, and seems to me it's appropriate to amend this order of consideration to include that in there. I'm on page A6, policy, I'm sorry, page three of policy A6, where it says the order of business.
Correct.
So I would say study session, and then following that, public comments on closed session, then closed session.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Just to be consistent with what we've concluded we're intending to do.
So you're saying after the phrase "study session," add "public comments"?
On closed-session agenda.
Okay. I mean, that's acceptable to counsel.
Is that, did you care to amend your motion on that?
So amended.
Okay. You know, my own view is consistent with that of Councilman Selig, that it certainly is possible to present concisely and well in three minutes, and I would be willing to entertain the thought that I was, that I conducted the three-minute limit here today inappropriately as it relates to one side or the other. I don't think I did that. I think it is relatively easy to be even-handed about all of that, and it is good to have a shorter target for people to be shooting for with their comments in terms of moving forward and giving everybody their say on every basis.
Well, one problem, Mr. Mayor, that I saw when you have three minutes is that quite a few people were given additional time, and that kind of creates its own set of issues. I mean, when is time granted? When is it not? Versus if you have five minutes, I think most people can stay within that envelope.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hill?
If I might comment. I, too, have received a significant amount of communication over the past week related to the, one of our next agenda items, as to the reorganization of some of the city and city functions and community task force committees. In light of that, I have actually changed my opinion on the time, and I would support the five minutes over the three on the assumption that the mayor had the authority when determining the number of speakers present to revert back to three. And on that basis, today's hearing clearly would have been a three-minute time limit, would not have been a five-minute. But if there's only one or two people to speak on a topic, then I don't see what the issue would be with the additional two minutes. And I guess in a, in a public gesture to acknowledge that the reorganizations that we're talking about, by my belief, are really meant to bring more transparency and involve more people in the process of the city, that the five minutes would be appropriate.
Further comment? All right. So the motion, excuse me, Councilman Rosansky?
I'll just chime in quickly. Quite honestly, I never supported the three-minute rule for public comments on non-agenda items when we did this years ago, I think probably before any of you were on the city council. I've been around that long to see it, and I'm sorry to see it even being suggested today. I mean, coupled with some of the other items, you know, before this agenda item and some we're going to consider afterwards, it seems to be just a chipping away at the public's right to come and speak and take part in the processes that go along or, you know, occur here. And so I also am in favor of leaving it five minutes. I don't think it's created a problem. And in those situations where we do have a large turnout, we've amended our rule. We've said, okay, five minutes for the first hour, three minutes after. You can make it a half hour. You can make it three minutes. I mean, but as we saw tonight, I mean, at least a half a dozen, maybe more, of the speakers went over their time, and I don't know if they were 30 seconds over, two minutes over, or five minutes over. It just seems like five minutes is fair. It's worked, and there's no reason to change it.
Okay. Any further comments? So the motion on the table here is to hold...
Mr. Mayor, I can count to four, so I will withdraw my substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Okay. In that event, we're back to the original motion, but I would still suggest that we need to add in the change in the order of business to...
I accept that.
Okay. All right. Any further comment? Then let's vote on the motion to make it five minutes and three minutes.
Motion carries.
I believe we are on to agenda item 15, relating to council goals for 2011 and then review of committee responsibilities. Do we have a staff report?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council members, this item discusses at least a couple of things. One is recaps for those who didn't attend our Saturday session on February 5th, the 2010 goals briefly, and I'll do it as quickly as I did it then. If you want to highlight something, you're welcome to and ask more questions about it. And then also ask you to adopt a resolution, formally adopting the five goals for 2011. And then, as council members have indicated, this, at least in my mind, necessitated a conversation about the roles of our committees. Tonight, I'm not asking for an action associated with those committees, but just for some direction, whether you would, this is kind of how you might explore those committee roles, and then we would have to bring back a formal action to you. So let me get right to that. I'm going to, again, generally go through quickly the, there are 46 or so of the 2010 priorities with some highlights. You'll see just a couple of ones that are recurring. Airport is recurring. We had a group homes issue that continues, and I think Mayor Hen characterized some of these as an implementation mode, and I would reaffirm that. Some of these issues, you've told us what you want done, we're doing it at a staff We indeed followed the fiscal sustainability plan last year, continuing to follow it this year. It's an adopted resolution, adopted a balanced budget, maintaining the highest possible bond rating. Those missions are accomplished. Updating the facilities financing plan, you'll talk about that again a little bit later tonight in the context of the Civic Center project. Updating the harbor fees, that was a major step forward, at least to address first the mooring fees and the fees at the Balboa Yacht Basin. Restructuring city government was a focus last year. There was quite a bit that occurred and more to come in 2010, excuse me, 2011, '12. We conducted another citizen satisfaction survey. We updated the city charter. We worked on communications again, as folks know and the audience, if you're a member of our, if you are a fan of our Facebook page and receive our tweets. We do that. I'll just kind of keep thumbing through here. For the first time, we have funding identified, or at least it was before this week in Congress, for the Lower Bay project. So not quite sure what the Republicans in the House were proposing this week, but we have a little bit of money there, at least to start the Lower Bay dredging project. We worked on, as you folks know, an update for the vision for Lido Marina Village and this site here. So that process has been moving forward with some need to move forward next on Balboa Village, although that's something you'll talk about in a moment. Did an air quality study with John Wayne. Upper Bay dredging project was complete. It was a big deal. That was at least a 10- to 12-year effort, $48.5 million. Dredging the Rhine Channel underway, at least in terms of all the planning and permitting associated with that. We hope to start construction this summer on that. It's a big deal because no council before you has ever taken a step to remove that sediment which dates back to the 1940s. We did indeed present you with some ideas on sea level changes, and we'll continue to work on that. There's a public art agreement with the Orange County Museum of Arts associated with the new Civic Center. That Civic Center, of course, you'll talk about again tonight, having already broken ground on it. Starting construction of Sunset Ridge Park, gosh, I sure wish we were doing that. That's involved in some litigation, as well as the Coastal Commission. Same with Marina Park. I know there's been folks who've been asking, where are we with Marina Park? And believe it or not, that's been a long, slow slog, but we're making progress in terms of getting all those permits. And we have updated the page in the quarterly business report associated with this. So if folks are curious about, gosh, what's been taking so long, we did update that page to show exactly what progress has been accomplished. And of course, we're able to complete the terrific new Oasis Senior Center on time and under budget. Couple more on there. We continue to work on Buck Gully and traffic management. More and more phases of the city are folded into that traffic management plan. I know it drives folks crazy if you're sitting in front of a red light, but know that it's actually improving, and they're more automated, and we have somebody who works on those real-time at City Hall to make sure you actually get a green light when you go up there. And you'll see more efforts here associated with community enhancements. Planning for the future of the current City Hall hot site, I mentioned that a little bit. We talked about that just this afternoon again. And then working to change the dynamics for Fourth of July, I think, thanks to Councilmember Hen and, sorry, Mayor Hen and Councilmember Rosansky, we've got a neat team together to really work on something exciting that would be family-friendly for this Fourth, so we'll see how that does. So I'm going to stop there. If you have any questions about 2010 goals or wanted to ask the staff of any of that, I'll move kind of to 2011 next.
Counsel? Okay.
So in 2011, we kind of looked at it a couple of different ways with this pyramid. They're just reminding you that there are core city functions that we perform, and that's the base of what we do. And then we have a lot of 2010 efforts which really are in execution mode. You've given us guidance, you've told us what you want done, and we're doing those. And then we have this concept of emerging or generational issues for 2011 to top that off. And at the council's goal setting, you talked about five key things. And I direct you and anybody reading, if you have a staff report, you'll see more detail than is on this slide, these slides, about each of those goals, and it's my attempt, at least, at a summary work plan to see where those things are headed. And we start with John Wayne Airport, the extension of the settlement agreement. Again, the goal would be to secure those, the kind of neighborhood-friendly protections that are out there. We have a number of groups that work on that. The second goal is revitalization, or neighborhood revitalization, and that is a comprehensive approach to areas that we think need a little bit more shine and need some help, whether it's economic development or planning, land use, infrastructure, those kinds of things. And we've identified a number of these that would be, we'd be focusing on, again, through those multiple lenses, including code enforcement, as noted. Tidelands Management is the next one. That, our goal being a comprehensive management and governance structure and investment strategy for all tidelands that would address our long-term needs like dredging, beach replenishment, sea level rise, our oil and gas program, or water quality needs, like the one Mayor Protam Gardner mentioned, the selenium project.
Is Zeal Grass in there somewhere?
It should be. It's part of this group. I didn't pull them all out. Number four would be pension reform, and we, your counsel has talked about this a lot, enact or assist the statewide or regional enactment of public pension reform that maintains our competitiveness in terms of attracting good candidates, but also protects the long-term sustainability. There's been some, some good progress on that already, thanks to your work and some, and some work by the employees, too. The fifth one is city restructuring, and that's to advise and guide me and the staff in what we call moving the city government forward from a good-to-a-grade organization, including regular communications with you and with the public, and extensive community involvement to ensure that community needs are met. I'm going to jump back to this. And the focus on the bottom being that we're going to act as a disciplined organization based on disciplined thought. And back to community involvement, that's kind of where the next subject comes in. And I decided to just throw this on the table and have you discuss it, because I've been here 13 years. I haven't been with the city manager except about a year and a half, but I do see some struggles happening with our committees and commissions. We have very dedicated volunteers, and some of these commissions are within the charter. They're required commissions. But sometimes we either have an ill-defined goal for them, or we put them on this mode of meeting month to month, basically to just get reports. Or sometimes they cast about, looking for things that they think they should be doing without good guidance from us. And I'll be candid with you about staff, too. When we staff these committees, I think we suffer from an abundance of politeness. We don't want to tell the committees no, but it's, it's almost passive-aggressive politeness because we, if we, if a committee is headed down a path that we haven't been asked to do by council, I think we tend to put less energy and emotion into responding to that committee, and it ends up taking longer than it should or just being put in a place that doesn't get the kind of follow-through that it needs. or just being put in a place that doesn't get the kind of follow-through that it needs. So my vision for the committees, and certainly like your input on this, is that where a committee would still exist, it would receive direct direction from you folks. Let's say you wanted Harbor Commission to focus on a particular item and get back to you. You'd send it to them. They would work on it, they'd send it back to you. Similarly, the Harbor Commission, the smart guys that they are, guys and gals, they could propose something, hey, council, we think this is an issue for us. We'd like your blessing to study it. So that you would take a look at that, send it back to them if you thought that was appropriate. With this goal of making the most of the committee's time, the committee members' time, and making sure they don't go down a path that may be well-meaning, but some, a place that you folks, as the elected representatives, didn't want them to go. So as such, in your staff report, I had some ideas about how the current committees might be differently used, especially if indeed these are your five goals for 2011, that we really involve these people in a different way, and hopefully a more robust way. The people on EDC and EQAC and the Harbor Commission all have great input that could be provided to the tidelands group, or to the revitalization group. And if we were making the most of everyone's time, we would, we would have them plugged into those systems, those committees, that work in 2011, really focusing on it to help address your needs and the community's needs. So these items are in your staff report. I named a number of committees and commissions, not all of them. But I also, as the councils were, we have a number of ad hoc committees. These are council committees of about three people. And it makes sense to move these, all the ones listed, I think, into one of those two larger groups, the tidelands group or the neighborhood revitalization group. So I'm just gonna thumb through these, just kind of with various thoughts on, at least as I would put that. And then welcome your comments. And certainly, I see a number of the committee members in the public, and I always welcome their input, too. Again, my goal being to make their input and their time as useful as possible for them and for the community. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd welcome your comments.
Okay, Counsel, Councilman Gardner?
I think this is a good idea. I think of my experience with EQAC, and it has so much potential when we have an issue like the leaf blowers, or the smoking on the beaches and the parks and that sort of thing. For them to give us, not only do they give us feedback in terms of what a broad range of residents think, but they also do research. I mean, they can often help staff by going off and looking at what other cities are doing in a way that staff may not have time to do. So I think it's, can be very valuable. But I do think that this way is going to make it more rewarding for the members, because right now, with a monthly meeting, even though we don't always meet monthly, there is a sense of, well, let's think of something to meet about. And that, I think we all feel that. I mean, that's sort of a patronizing way to get through life. Whereas if we say, gee, here's an issue the council really wants us to get our teeth into and come back to them, then there's a sense of purpose and energy, which I think will be very valuable. So I think that these ideas are terrific.
Okay. Other council comment?
Just looking at the list here, as far as the July Fourth Steering Committee. I see we're not proposing to eliminate it immediately, but to sunset it at the end of 2012. And I know both you and I have been trying to move Fourth of July on the Peninsula into a different direction. I don't think it's gonna be complete by the end of 2012. And I do see a value to that committee as far as the community is concerned. And I think there'll be a lot of disappointment if that, even if we talk about sunsetting it a year and a half, almost two years from now. I just don't, at some point, I hope that we can sunset that committee, because the problem is gone and done away with. But I'm not hopeful that it's gonna happen in two years.
Okay. Councilman Hill?
Councilman Rosansky, no matter how hard you try, it will always be on July the Fourth.
The problem or the holiday? Or both?
Both. I think that this is a great step in moving the city into best practices of efficiency for not only the staff, but for the citizens committees. And as I've mentioned before, I've received numerous calls on this over the last couple of weeks. And often, those calls have started off with a concern that this was some kind of an attempt to limit community involvement. And I actually see this just the opposite. And of course, I'm focusing primarily, well, I was gonna say on the revitalization, but I think it would absolutely hold true on the tidelands as well, in that, as I envision this, the council establishes the priorities. The council assigns three members to a Brown Act committee that has other citizens on that committee, such as the EDC, or such as EQAC. Picking the talent and the capability of what that primary focus is that would bring the most value to the table. It would not be a committee as large as EDC or EQAC, but would be a working steering committee that would then be augmented with working groups from the area that was being addressed. And with that augmentation, the total organization would be larger than what exists today, but it would have a totally different functioning hierarchy, and much more efficient in its direction, and would have a direction. So I would see that this would be a much more efficient way to accomplish more with actually less staff time. And so it's doing more with less, and I think that's kind of what this era is all about. I'm very supportive over it. I think it should work very well. It takes a bit more organization from the top down, but I think that that capability is there and that it will work.
Councilman Selish?
I agree with Councilman Hill and Mayor Protem Gardner. I think it's a good step in the right direction. I'm not gonna repeat everything they said, but I do think what it'll do, it'll help us focus people's efforts more directly on the problems and the issues that we want to deal with, and be able to take better advantage of folks' talents. So might need a little bit of tweaking here and there, but I'm supportive of it.
Councilman Curry?
Well, I'm also supportive of it. I think some of these committees can be sunsetted almost immediately. And I think you've identified that. I think others, such as EDC and EQAC. I think we need to have some dialogue with the members in this context. I know a lot of this probably caught a lot of the committee members flat-footed, and they're sort of, you know, flailing around, finding out what this really means. You know, it's hard for us to sort of know what it really means. But we need to get some input from them in the context of this new focus. And I think it ultimately is gonna be an advantage in our decision-making as we go forward.
Okay. Well, I would add a few comments in response to Councilman Rosansky. I see the July Fourth activity being a named responsibility for the Revitalization Committee and continuing under that umbrella as opposed to a separate committee. Because I think the Revitalization Committee will be in a better position to command and organize staff support and funding support than the current committee that's responsible for that. If it's a part of, but it would need to be a called-out responsibility for the Revitalization Committee. So I agree with your statements about the need for it. I just think it's better under that weight of your umbrella.
Well, as long as the, I guess, the heart is kept. I mean, you can call whatever you want, just as long as that there's gonna be some type of community involvement with the Fourth of July, and that we'll continue to make progress in turning it into a more family-friendly.
Yeah, absolutely. And that remains an important goal for me as well. Then, with relation to Councilman Hill's comments, I see the organization essentially the same as described by Councilman Hill, but with a slight twist. And that is that there be three council members, and that this committee would, either of the Revitalization or the Tidelands Committees, would schedule regular monthly meetings with public agendas, public participation, posting of notes and minutes and that sort of thing. But that the three council members be augmented by a citizens advisory panel that would be named by those three council members, so that we do have dedicated citizen support for those committees. But it sort of threads a needle, retains a little bit more flexibility for the committee members to also move the agenda forward in between the public monthly meetings. And so I see that as a, as a bit of a novel and a little different way to approach this that retains all the necessary opportunity for public input, which we clearly want. And then that committee would, as it's been mentioned, organize, either draw upon other existing committees for specific tasks that would be well-defined with timelines, et cetera, or calls for the formation of a particular special committee that's formed for a specific purpose, does its work, and then is sunsetted. So I kind of see how that that's a good way for us to proceed. I did have a couple of comments on EQAC. It seems to me, sunsetting that committee would be appropriate, but there's a couple of things that they probably ought to finish out on before that actually happens, which would be the smoking and probably the banning ranch.
Well, I think, I still think there may be, I don't know, we're ready to sunset it, because I know that, for example, the students are gonna be coming to us with the proposal to eliminate plastic bags. Well, that's a perfect issue to have, unless the council just knew right off the bat what it wanted to do, but a really good issue. And there'll be issues along the way, so I don't know.
So you see that as not necessarily being a standing monthly committee, but the committee staying in?
Definitely not a monthly committee, but on an as-needed basis.
Only dealing with requested task issues?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, there may be somebody that, from the committee, that would come forward to the council and suggest an idea.
Okay. Well, in order to help bring some clarity for staff's benefit, then, it sounds like we've got a lot of agreement here surrounding what's being requested in terms of the sunsetting and with this additional comment and the hiatus.
I would just like to reemphasize that I think the logic for doing this is to allow limited staff time to help us and the community focus on the priorities that are set. So I would like to think that anything that we had any committee doing would somehow or another tie into our priorities, or we would be aborting the purpose of moving in this direction.
You know, just like staff is taking chances, reorganizing how it views its function, going from good to great, I think council needs to take a few chances here. Maybe they will get this wrong, and we'll have to backtrack, but I think it's worthwhile for us to really try this. And I'm a real proponent, when you're really seeking true efficiency, it's not by just turning the dial a little bit. It's by eliminating programs and taking whole-new approaches to solutions as opposed to turning the dials a little bit incrementally. So this is in that spirit. And if we get it wrong, we'll fix it. But I think it's really worthwhile to proceed.
I've got one quick question.
Sure.
On EQAC, if we're gonna convene, EQAC is needed. Are they still gonna be doing EIR? So when an EIR comes up, we do that? Or is it, what would you do with that?
I'm gonna be shot by the people on EQAC, but I don't think so. I mean, my view is that there's ample opportunity for residents to comment on EIRs. And over the years, we do not have a lot of the expertise, the specific expertise that we have had sometimes in the past. So that it's very much from a resident's perspective. And one of the frustrations of staff, I know, has been that the comments don't deal with SEQA often. And so I don't, to me, I don't know that that would be a problem. Because as I say, there are plenty of opportunities for anyone to comment on an EIR and get a response. You get a response if you comment.
Okay. We need to have public comment on this issue. So I'd be glad to invite any member of the public to come make a comment. And you've got five minutes to do it. Ready, set, go.
My name is Jim Mosher. To echo Commissioner Hawkins' remarks a little bit earlier, I have some trouble with this whole idea of running the city like a lean, efficient, money-making business, especially when the management model adopted is that of this book, Good to Great, written in the year 2000, in which the companies cited as the ones everyone should strive to emulate at that time included Circuit City, now bankrupt, Gillette, gobbled up by a competitor, and Fannie Mae, praised for the innovative new mortgage products it was introducing. I seem to recall that when Orange County Treasurer became enamored with innovative, business-like investments, our county went from admirable solvency to bankruptcy almost overnight. Since risk-taking and making money are not the normal goals of governments, the management models that serve lucky businesses well, and sometimes not so well, may not be so useful to us. City governments, it seems to me, have many essential core functions that the residents depend on. And unlike with a business, they cannot just be dropped to focus attention on some new, more attractive goal, even if they're generational goals, like the mayor is fond of speaking of. Maintaining and improving the core functions is, I think, the most fundamental and worthy of all the generational goals. So it bothers me that the forty-six wide-ranging priorities the council identified last year seem to have been declared more or less done and to be replaced by five big new ones. And that everything unrelated to the new five big ones is essentially to be stripped away. Major unresolved generational issues, such as the possibility of maintaining Banning Ranch as an open space area comparable to the Upper Bay, seem to be swept down the pyramid to where they're now out of the realm of further legitimate public conversation. As I understand it, improving communication with the citizens and keeping the city at the technological cutting edge were and apparently still are major continuing goals. And I know from personal experience, the city is much in need of revising its telecom ordinance. Yet I see Mayor Protem Gardner's Media and Communications Committee, which nominally advises on all those issues, is being, it's scheduled for the Dusty because it does not fit squarely with the new five big goals. As worthy as those goals may be, I think it's unwise to reorganize the city around them as this report seems to be recommending, without consideration to the larger and more important core things a city has to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other public comments?
Tim Stokes, and I also received that email from Superman here that said the committees were commencing. But I also agree with what Nancy said about EQAC, as being a member of EQAC, that I think the committee is best served in other forums, and the ER process is such a public process that you can comment on those in other venues. So I think, as an EQAC member, we haven't met quite often, except for the Christmas party, but I agree with that. Let's go ahead and hit it with a beer stick, so, yeah. The other one question I'd like to add is the city's website. One of the communication exercises is to keep up date with the pages on the projects. It's not quite done. Like, say if you pull up the Oasis Center, it's kind of incomplete and lots of typos on it. So I would hope that as we go through with the City Hall project, that that becomes a very good communication tool, and it's very accurate, and it's kept up to date in somewhat of a real-time exercise. So that would be my only comment on the communication product. Thanks. Thank you.
One of the ways that I think that citizens can communicate is...
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie O'Neill. Because I've had really a lot of success with Dave Kiff in giving him input on little items that I see around the city. And he's been actually incredible at taking care of it. And I'm really here to thank him publicly for it. He's great, wonderful city manager. And I thought all of your comments on the committees were excellent.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robert Hawkins. I live in the city of Newport Beach. And one correction on my last comments. We held the mayor's dinner that was Speak Up Newport. I know all you understood that, but folks out in the audience. Okay, I'm here on this committee issue because I strongly disagree with most of you. I have been chairman, I was on EQAC in 1999, was chairman from 2000 to 2004, and was on EDC during that time, and then went off EDC for a period, and am now on EDC as a planning commission representative. I believe, actually, both of these committees provide invaluable... I believe, actually, both of these committees provide invaluable citizen input to you folks. Now, it may not be what you regard as useful input, but it is, I think, valuable input for the citizens. And that goes, this goes back to the question of the model. I mean, if we're really going to think that we're a company and some, we need to really think about what is the relationship between the city, its residents, the council, its their residents, the electorate, the customers. There's a whole myriad of things that don't really play out in that model. Having said that, I want to talk about, oh, and also, I think both of these committees provide important advisory content to you. As Mr. Mayor, you indicated you wanted to have this sort of advisory group, I think that's important. But I think when you have three council members, that many citizens in the city will be not cowed, but off-put, so that the, so that the input that they are giving you is what you may want to hear, and I think you're going to lose out of that. So I think that the model I would encourage you to adopt would be a bottom-up model for some of these committees, not all of the committees, because I think, I think this sort of task force focus group works well. We saw it work well with the charter update. The committee worked quickly, boom, it was done, and the citizens adopted it. But I think EDC and, to a greater extent, EQUAC provide a bottom-up model that will help you, one, diffuse discontent, if there is any, provide you with surprising input that you would not get any other way. And let me go back to what EQUAC has done, because I think people forget about that. It was focused on commenting on environmental impact reports, impact reports of all types. And as a matter of fact, in, I forgot to look up the year, I think 2003, EQUAC developed a comment letter on the addendum for the Shoalie project. City Attorney's Office didn't do this. EQUAC developed it, it was reviewed by council, approved, Todd Ridgeway signed the letter, and it went to the city of Irvine during their public comment period, and the city of Newport Beach received as a result of that letter, which was drafted by the, by the committee, $400,000 in traffic mitigation fees for Jamboree and MacArthur. Now, that's not something that happened any other way, would have happened any other way. Now, the city Attorney's Office now may take a more active role, but that was, that was $400,000 that you didn't have to pay anybody for. So that's, that's an important point. What else has EDC done? It has provided useful comments on Marina Park. I believe banning ranch is going to be an important thing that the committee has got to comment on. I think there are a lot of city projects that will not, that will be exempt from the zoning code, that need to go through some committee that is reviewing the environmental document. Moving on to EDC, what has EDC done for us? One, the strategic plan, and Mr. Mayor, you were instrumental in getting that done. Long ago, EDC talked about developing a development agreement for the Coal Connexon project, that was the office project, not the residential project, and the city had never heard of that before, and that was council member, may I continue? I'm five minutes, and I've got...
If you, if you're going to be finishing shortly.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may continue with that interruption. At the last EDC meeting, we, we developed a business, temporary business license proposal for the council. I believe that staff will be bringing that to the council, and we do have a business license subcommittee that is actively pursuing the Title V of the business license. I think, finally, there are several committees that are missing from this committee list. First, as Mr. Rosansky indicated, the Arts Commission. I mean, the Arts Commission really doesn't seem to play a role. I, I think it's fine, but if they, if they, if the council is going to follow them, then might as well eliminate them. And then there's the General Plan Implementation Committee, which is not listed on here, but the General Plan Implementation Committee has not done anything for quite a while. The zoning code has been approved, and we are implementing it, but nothing else has happened. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, Bob. Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mary Hen, my name's Debbie Stevens. I'm a member of EQUAC, a fairly recent member to EQUAC, so it's kind of interesting to listen to this debate. Being fairly new, recently I asked a question, exactly what is this committee supposed to be doing? I was kind of unclear, and so to me, to, to make the committees work closer with the city council makes a lot of sense to me. I do think there's value in EQUAC, and I think, I personally enjoyed being on there to, to comment on the environmental documents, whether that's done as the committee, or as volunteers, or something else, I think that opportunity will still be there. There's also a lot of talent on, and expertise in EQUAC that I don't think is used. You have environmental attorneys, you have environmental consultants that prepare environmental impact reports. That, that, some of those resources have not really been tapped into, so it may be a good opportunity to actually look at what you have on the committee and possibly reassign it, but I do think there's some, there's expertise that's not being used and could probably be improved on. Thank you.
Mike?
Mr. Mayor, members, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike McNamara, and I'm a former chairman, I guess it's so chair, of the Water Taxi Exploratory Committee, the summer committee, and is a vice chair of the EDC. I speak tonight on, in terms of the water taxi, to ask you whether it was considered in terms of one of the items for your goal number three. Goal number three talks about harbor amenities and public docks and things of that nature, and I see it wasn't mentioned. I don't know if that means it was omitted, or just that it's, it's down in the dirt I didn't see any of the discussion on that. Just a reminder, the committee was formed as a result of the strategic plan, where the water taxi was part of the strategic plan. And just a reminder that the committee developed a feasibility study, discussed concepts and routes, and issues like subsidy or no subsidy in the docks, and it recommended that the city not provide a subsidy to any of the water taxi vendors, and the city seek proposals from, and creative ideas on how to, how to do it. I personally talked to four entrepreneurs that are willing to proceed on the project on the basis of no subsidy, so it would be minimal or no cost to the city. One of them is in the audience with me here, Shandeleer, owner of Lear Boats, and she's interested in exploring a water taxi approach. As, as you know, the trade-off would be a lease long enough to amortize some of their boat costs, and I think it's, it's doable with very small costs. So I guess my question, is the city still considering that, or is it, you know, is it off, off the table? And should it be considered in the, the goals, in the goal number three, Tideline Management, if we're fitting them in boxes?
Okay. Well, I'll just respond on, on behalf of myself, and that is that it would be an item that would be considered under the purview of the Tideline's Management Committee. I, I don't, we didn't try to list everything, Dave, did you want to?
We didn't try to list anything. David and I were just talking, I don't know if there's anything stopping someone who wanted to do a water taxi service right now from proposing one, getting a business license, and showing what it's going to look like. I don't know that it needs to be, I think that's been part of the problem, is that nobody has stepped forward that would be completely unsubsidized. If somebody's interested, isn't that kind of what you wanted to look at?
We don't have to franchise something like that?
I don't know. We could look at that, but it's basically a commercial, I don't know if it's any different from the boat cleaning businesses that operate out there. Something we could look at, but, and I'm not answering Mayor Hen's direct question, it could be something, I was thinking it's not even needed.
To the extent that the enablement of that service would require, though, city investment and, you know, docks and, you know, that sort of thing, there may be, you know, there may be more city involvement than you might mention, but I, but I, from my view, it's part of the Tideline's management group, and it ought to be considered as we start identifying projects and the master plan for the Tideline's group. I'd invite any other council comment to that effect.
I would just add that I think it's a perfect example of the new organization, if you will. There's a place specific to send that to, to incorporate it into all of the aspects that are being dealt with with respect to the Tideline, so that it's coordinated in, and it's not out there by itself anymore.
Would that be subject to PUC regulations?
Yeah, you're talking about the ferry, ferrying an individual, and certainly the Balboa Island Ferry has a franchise and a, an agreement with the city, so we have to take a look at that, but...
I'd like to check with Ralph Rodheim. Okay. Oops, I'm sorry.
Dan Purcell, Corona del Mar. I would just ask someone to comment on the sunsetting the bicycle safety committee. I saw it on there, and maybe someone could comment about that. I'm sure there's some good logic behind it. I would ask that public comments be respected in these committees, and that they be, the opportunity be well-defined, and that we allow time in these committees for people to come in and give presentations. I would ask that special emphasis be made on where these meetings are held, that these are proper presentation rooms for people to come in and provide presentation. Also, as citizens, we can provide free consulting to the city, we're experts in a lot of areas. We may not want to attend all committee meetings, or just the same committee meeting all the time, and we need technology opportunities. There needs to be a standard set of presentation equipment or what have you that's standardized across these meetings, so that residents, when they show up, they can be prepared for three minutes, or five minutes, or what have you. With multimedia, whatever that package may be, maybe the city staff wants to see it in advance of a meeting, maybe there's some time constraints or whatever, it has to be in PDF format, or some format that's acceptable, but that we have proper presentations for the citizens, and we have access to technology and places to put laptops, to plug laptops in, bring that. We come to these meetings, and the staff's all teched up and communicating, and everyone's doing their thing, and we're sitting back here, you know, struggling in some of these meetings rooms, the fire conference room, and different rooms like that. Hopefully that will be resolved in two years, the new, but have these in proper, you know, presentation rooms would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm Shanda Lear Baylor from Lear Electric Boats, and I'd just like to say that when I saw that on the list there wasn't the water taxi, I was kind of sorry, because we're waiting to hear what the staff had prepared for us, because we want to do this. And we think that going from good to great as a business, Newport Beach needs to relieve the problem of parking on the peninsula, and they need to work together with the water taxi to allow parking across, on the mainland, for people to be then shuttled to the peninsula, and to add a, an attraction of almost entertainment for people, for visitors, so that they can actually experience this jewel of Southern California. So I would like to work with the city and know what you guys, what we, what kind of hoops do we have to jump through in order to be able to make this possible for this wonderful place that I'm really enjoying living in? So, thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd?
Lloyd Iker, and I'm also a member of the E, of EQUAC, of EDC. You know, one thing, what I try to do when I'm on EDC is, I'm trying to get, I've had events that I've tried to present here in the city, and I haven't found it really 100% business-friendly. And some of the things that we've been working now with staff and with EDC is to try to make our community a little bit more. I was involved with the, what we call vintage vacations down at the Dunes, and it would bring a lot of people in the community, but for whatever reason, it was killed by the business license portion of the community. Well, I think we've got that resolved now, because with this, this subcommittee that we've got on business licenses, something will be coming to the council here pretty soon, and I think not only have we saved the city about $25,000, but I think we've also resolved that issue to where we can support more of these events. I had the same situation where I was trying to bring the Helms Bakery truck onto the island, and I'm not just saying this just for my own, but the hoops that I had to go through, I mean, I just gave up on it, because they were saying that we couldn't sell, you know, food out of a truck, and then I got ran over by In-N-Out burgers. So I think that really, having EDC and their subcommittees, I think it brings a lot of talent that takes away the time that's necessary, and especially in this budget time, things from the, that the staff needs to do. And we can make recommendations to the staff, and then they make recommendations to the council, and at that point, I think, with the talent that we've got on these committees, I think it's very helpful to move the community forward, and we've got more of a pulse on the community sometimes than even the council. I used to be a councilman and a mayor, and I understand that you get your hands full a lot of times, and you like to get that input from the community, from people who are actually, you know, out there working, doing things every day. So I think that keeping these committees, these different committees, I think is very important to the growth and, and the health of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Do we have any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action, and any final discussion? Do we have a motion on the table? I've lost track. Well, no, we need to move, we need to adopt the goals.
Well, there'd be one, one adoption of the resolution, right?
So would anyone care to move the item?
Move the item.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Do, do we have any further council comment? Doesn't appear to. Dave, do you have sufficient guidance based on this discussion?
I think I do, thank you.
All right, then let's vote.
Motion carries.
All right, very good. We are on to agenda item number 16, which I presume we have a staff report for.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, this item is the next time, maybe the last time that the Civic Center project would come before you. And just to remind kind of the public where we are with this, this is a project that started in the works immediately after the passage of, I believe, Measure B in February of 2008. And we started with a design competition directed by the council. That design competition winnowed 51 architectural firms down to five. One was eventually selected to refine a concept plan, and then the concept plan moved into schematic design, and then design development, and then construction documents, and all that brings us, well, in the, in the process of that, we broke ground. We started work on this project, this project between Avocado and MacArthur. So our initial efforts in this project was to do a massive excavation effort, which is about done. Those of you that live nearby certainly saw it all happen. I know Debbie's here, Debbie Stevens, she lives by there. Then we brought to, and this, what we've done is we've had a private sector manager work on this project, and that company is called CW Driver, and what happens is we fold all of the contracts into their contract called a GMP, or a Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract. And this is a contract where the contractor, the construction manager, is responsible for cost overruns over the GMP, and it's because, basically, cities like ours aren't used to building projects this big, so we look to the private sector, who is used to doing it, to accomplish that. So the next phase that was rolled into the Civic Center project was the parking structure. It was a design-assist-build method, so that's been actually in plan check, and it's about ready to roll. The contract's been awarded, we got a good low bid on that. We got a good low bid on that, but that brings us to tonight, and tonight is basically the rest of the project. And remember, this is a library expansion, about 17,000 square feet. It's a connection between the library and a new city hall building. It is the city hall building. It's a council chambers, it's a community room, and it's what will be Newport Beach's fifth-largest park, designed by Peter Walker Partners, those of you who were in the, Peter Walker's presentation at the, that the Arts Commission sponsored a couple of weeks ago. He's quite an amazing guy in terms of what he proposes, so this is going to be one of those parks I think people are going to say wow when they see it, as well as the buildings and this being a true civic center for the, for the community of Newport Beach. So with that, I'm going to ask Steve Badham to refine this a little bit further, at least our discussion, and welcome your comments and the public's comments.
Thanks, Dave. Mayor and council, I'll, we have a little bit of a presentation here, but because of the hour, we'll try to go through it really quickly. Just a quick refresher, the construction manager risk process, we, you know, as Dave mentioned, we approved the general conditions, which are all the fixed costs, the personnel to manage the project, oversee all the bidding. There was over 45 subcontractors involved, and it also involves the guaranteed maximum prices Dave mentioned. One thing I did want to point out is that, you know, there are some savings that could be had in this project with contingencies. Quick review, this is what we approved back in April, the general conditions and the GMP one, which is the Mass X, and Dave gave you a quick upgrade on that. The GMP two, which is the parking structure, which is the design-assist-build, and so as you can see on the bottom there, we have a running tabulation. And now we're to the point where we're at GMP number three, and we hope this is the last, and it does include the city hall office building, the central library expansion, and the parks, and those are the numbers there. You'll also notice there's a credit in this particular one, one because there was a wall in, that was in the GMP number one, that is, was, we decided not to build it during that process, so now that moves from the first phase to the third phase. So it's not that we're leaving the wall out, but it's, we're moving it from one phase to the third phase, so therefore the credit. And the other one was really substantial. It was $260,000 because of the parking structure being designed as an open structure design, and this was a result of a lot of great work with CW Driver and Bowens, Swinski, Jackson, and our, our contract, building plan check review firm, Anderson-Penna-Interwest, and we came up with some really good ideas to save this money. So there's, there's a good, good operation there that, that saved us a few dollars. And then all the other fees, of course, the direct expenses and the construction management fee. As I mentioned before, there are contingencies, and those are built into the GMP. As you can see, it's kind of winding down. Initial with GMP was at 8% because it's, you know, earthwork is very unpredictable. Then this parking structure at five, and then now we're posing a 3% GMP contingency for the total of about a little over $3 million in total contingency. There are a couple of things that are undone, that are remaining, and for probably some good reasons, the signage and the wayfinding, we found that it's probably best to be paired with the FFNE process, so it all ties together. So we're going to hold off on that one for now.
I have another question. Oops, I already, sorry.
Hopefully you go to yes.
Signage and wayfinding, so that means not just, I was thinking of the signs in the building, like...
Yeah, it is the signs in the building. It's also signs outside the building, signs in the parking structure directing people where to go, how to get to the library, in the library extension.
Are they all custom signs or something? This seems like it's really a lot of money for signs.
Well, that's kind of one of the, that's a placeholder. We thought it was a little high, too, but when you start adding up all of the room numbers and all of the tags, it does add up. But this is something we didn't want to just put an allowance in the GMP for because we want to see some hard numbers. We want to see the bids.
Does this include the monument sign?
Yes, this would include the entry sign, yes.
Monument signs can be pretty expensive.
Yeah. So, you know, we, we want to scrutinize that, and we just didn't want to put an allowance in there. We wanted to hold off. So this will come back to you later on this, probably in the spring, maybe early summer at the latest, so we can take a look at that and really give you some hard numbers that are, that are truly bid numbers.
So Steve, Driver then would not participate in any savings associated with a lower actual number?
Right, that's correct. If, if, let's say it come in, came in at hopefully $200,000, then that would, that would be our cost, and the 200, the other 200,000 would, would kind of come back to the city. It's not, it's not money that's out there already, it's just to be added in. The other item that's out there is the additional site electrical, and this kind of came up at the 11th hour, working with Edison, some things that they wanted us to add into the project that were, quite frankly, a total surprise to us. So we're still working with them, and I think we have some, we have some issues to work through, so we wanted to pull that out of the project as well, and we're going to bring that back to you as well after we sit down with Edison and, and work with Driver and the subcontractors to come up with some really good numbers, we hope, on that as well.
If, Mr. Mayor, if I could make a brief comment on that. I've seen Edison pull that kind of trick in the past, and it's very obnoxious, and, you know, they're supposed to be a pretty sophisticated company, they're supposed to have been around for a while, and they should be able to figure this stuff out ahead of time instead of sneaking up on you in the end. And, and so I would encourage staff to lean on Edison heavily to see how much they'd like to contribute to be able to service this building.
We'll do that. So I guess here's the, here's the kind of the, the subtotal for the construction, the total construction project for all of the construction items, including the GMP contingencies and the remaining items. And as you can see, we pretty much hit our target that we originally told you back in April of about $105 million for the construction part of the project. So again, quick about the contingencies, there's a, there's a, there's an amount, there's two contingencies. There's the construction contingency, which is in the GMP, and then there's the owner contingency. And as we've said before, the, the construction contingency, if they, if we manage to preserve that, and Driver is in control of that to some extent, they get a, they get a cut. They get 25% of that if they manage to save it. Now, the owner contingency is something that's totally controlled by the city, and they would not get any of that if we save it all, so we're, we're hoping we can do that. I also want to add that any of these changes, any of the spending of the contingency is, is really going to be connected to the building committee. As far as major changes, I mean, some minor things may, may happen just to keep work moving forward, but it's our intention to keep the building committee fully informed of all of the changes that occur, and then if there are any major changes, it'll come back to the full council.
How are you going to keep the city council informed of any change orders that occur?
Well, I think that's what we're going, we're meeting with the building committee on a regular basis. If something comes up, we'll let them know. If it's substantial, I'm sure Mr. Kiff will be letting all the council members know.
Actually, Steve, I talked with Councilmember Daigle about making sure on our website that the council will receive a notification via email of any impact to the construction contingency or the, and that the owner's contingency actually be something treated even differently. So we can do that.
And here again is the split, and I just wanted to kind of show you that there's roughly almost $6 million in contingencies, of which we have an opportunity to save $5 million now, and of course Driver and their participation would earn close to $800,000. But I want to point out that this is a very complex project, very complicated building structure, so as much as I'd love to tell you that we're going to save all of that, there's probably going to be some costs, so, but you'll be fully informed if they are our costs and what those costs might be.
Do you want to speak briefly about Phase One, because Phase One is just about done, and what you expect the disposition of those contingencies to be?
Sure, thanks, Dave. Phase One is actually, went very well. I mean, it's usually the scary phase, when we're digging in dirt, we don't know what we're going to run into, especially when we're in an area where there's possibility of running into artifacts of, of, you know, of nature and, and Native Americans. So that was very much of a concern to us. We were fortunate, we did not have any of those problems. And right now, in the GMP number one, I think we're maybe around $100,000 to $200,000 in potential extras, and so I think we're doing pretty good considering there's close to $1 million in that, that first GMP. So we're still kind of trying to figure out which, you know, what's, what's coming up in there, but it's really looking good to return most of that back to the city. You also asked to see kind of what this cost is by phase, so we, we put that together here, and it's really, it was kind of a hard thing, and I really, my hats off to CW Driver for kind of pulling this together at the last minute, but most of our bid packages really don't distinguish between projects. It's all concrete, or it's all doors, or it's all windows. So, but they did a great job kind of working it back through and kind of coming up with the costs, and you can see the main city hall office building is running close to $500 a square foot. Now, that's the construction cost, that's not any soft costs. The next part of this, this presentation, you know, that you have a sheet in front of you that's got lots of colors on it, and what I wanted to kind of do is I'll walk through this, but we just kind of wanted to give you a, a quick feel, and I'll go through it quickly.
Steve, excuse me, can you, can you put that prior slide back up there one more second? So these are the estimated costs by phase, but if council were to elect not to do something up on that list, is that the amount of money that would come out of the project, or is that a different number?
I think if you, I think it would be a different number. It would be somewhat close to that. There are complications if we, let's say if we decided not to do the park or some of the site improvements. There, as Dave has mentioned earlier, there's already a stockpile in the North Park. There's a lot of work that's been already kind of done grading-wise, so some of that money is already worked into those costs. But I think we'd have to go back and redesign certain portions of the project if we took them out, and then others like the library expansion, we could delete the library expansion, but we may be limiting our opportunity down the road to really add that in. And then we'd still need to provide some kind of connection between the library building and the city hall, otherwise the, the site doesn't work.
And the park and site improvements, that's for both the North Park and the main park, right?
Yes, yes, and even some of the park around the buildings.
Rough and tough, what's the North Park piece of that, do you think?
Yeah, it's probably close to a third. So I'd say around, you know, 6 million.
Around 6 million, okay.
Any questions on that? So kind of starting off with our, our, our competition, and Dave kind of went through the history of it, so it goes back to 2008, so there's a lot of things on here. What we did is we showed the projected costs and the optimistic costs, and, you know, Dave's optimistic viewpoint's rubbing off on me, although I tend to try to be conservative, but he's conned me into some, some ideas here. No, I'm just kidding. They're actually very good ideas. On the, on design and project management costs, you can see that we're getting, we were about $15 million all in on the design monies. You can see on the optimistic side, though, during construction support, we've kind of come to think that perhaps if we really, using the disciplined thought and disciplined action philosophy, maybe we can shave 7%, 7% of the, of the costs off of some of these time and material contracts that are, you know, supporting the project. So from this point forward, we're going to make every effort we can to try to take that out of the project. The next, this next slide is kind of showing us the design and also the, the project management costs that were involved, and again, we're trying to shave some money off of the ongoing construction support. Another, next slide is, is really kind of that summary. And then here we are with the construction numbers. Now, remember the 104, 906, 931, but we also looked at it and said, okay, what are other areas that we can save some money? And one of the areas is the remaining value engineering. And in the packet that you received, there's a chart that shows a bunch of value engineering in there. I think it's like almost $3 million worth of ideas. So we're going to say that we're going to shoot for at least getting a million three of those ideas done and on the table, so that'll be part of our optimistic costs. And then again, there's the savings for the contingency in the GMP, and then you see the footnote one there. So it looks like if, you know, our optimistic cost drops about, close to $3 million. Then running along, we're looking at our construction services out there, and we have, we have ongoing geotechnical support. A lot of this is already done. We still think there's some money to be saved there as well. The lead commissioning, that's the, now it's a private firm that's going to be looking over our project to make sure we meet all the lead standards. We have material testing, and there's an area where we think we might be able to shave some. And then we have our OSIP, our Owner Controlled Insurance Program, and we can get into that program a little more, but we think that there, if our claims, if we don't have any claims filed, and we do a good job keeping a safe job site, that we can save a little over $1 million. We also looked at our, our building plan check. In fact, our current building plan check is actually, we, we beat that budget, so that might actually be close to a hard number there. And then, of course, the ongoing, what we're asking you to approve tonight is the construction and inspection and review services from Anderson-Penna-Interwest tonight under a contract, and we, while we're telling you it's a little over $1 million, we think we can kind of keep that down and try to hold that back. And as on all of our contracts, I just want to say that what we try to do is cover everything that we could possibly need and really give you a good work scope, but in every project that we have, we really try to be stingy about how much we actually do. We try to hold those costs down. And we did some of that in the design, and we did save a little bit in the design that way as well. And all those numbers aren't in yet, but I should be able to report back to you that we actually had some savings in the design consultant fees as well. And then there's the fixtures and furnishings and equipment, the FFNE. We're showing that we're, we're putting a budget allocation in for about $2 million, and we'll know that, more about that kind of closer in 2012. The other items that we were talking about is we could save the owner's contingency, and one of the things that I don't think Dave mentioned, but we do have a technology grant that came through, I believe, the cable companies, and for, it's $1.3 million that we want to kind of credit to this project, so that gives us a little more room. And then, of course, the alternatives that we've talked about, the San Miguel pedestrian overcrossing and the addition of the photovoltaic panels on the roof of the city hall office building, and that's a grand total of $2 million for the, for the bridge and, and $750,000 for the, for the PV panels. So that's one of the things we're going to, we want to discuss with you tonight, whether you, whether or not you want to move forward with that. So just to kind of give you the all-in numbers, and this is kind of, this is the money, the money page here, if you add all of this up with all of the alternatives, we're up at $135 million and some change. With the optimistic costs, we're, we're hoping for 125,000, 125 million. So this is kind of what I want to leave you with, is we're starting, we're starting at $135 million. We want to end closer to 125 or 124 million. And once we add in all of the things, if we decide not to do the bridge and we decide not to do the photovoltaics, it drops it down to 132 million. And then looking at the contingencies, the additional value engineering, the savings in the consultant services contracts, I mentioned the 7%, and then a safe job site as well as the cable grant for the Civic Center technology, we're looking at trying to get down to $124 million. So that's kind of where we're trying to head to, and we hope we're going to be diligent and, as we said, disciplined, thought, disciplined action to try to get to that number. action to try to get to that number. That's, that's pretty much what I had. I also wanted to, maybe if you wanted to chat about the PV cells, PV panels and the bridge, we have that information as well. Both of those items can be added at some future date, but would have to be rebid.
I'm happy to break here for council questions, but were you also going to present some information on the facilities financing plan or replacement plan? How, how were you going to?
We were. Actually, I've been sitting here thinking about how I transmitted that to you. Let me explain it verbally and maybe can run back to the office and get that if I need be. When we, when we proposed this project, we were shooting for a project of about 123 million total for the Civic Center project. And that included the project management costs, all the ones that Steve mentions today. The, that fits within our facilities financing plan. It fits in terms of, remember the, the goal there is that of our general fund operating budget, we would know, we would never contribute more than five percent of that to this plan. And this plan later includes other components, obviously, Sunset Ridge Park, Marina Park, et cetera. This continues to comply with that. We're looking at the, the plan in the context of other projects that should be right sized. We talked about that this afternoon, in fact. But there are other, other efforts there that were based on 2007 and 2008 construction costs, which have changed dramatically to 2011. They've, they've gone down in, in most areas. So we're trying to reflect that in the FFP and then we inflate it from there. So I, if you'd like to see that chart, I actually don't have it in front of me and intended to, I can show you how that works within the FFP. Maybe if you had other questions, I can run back to the desk and get it.
Well, but, but you've made some revisions to that FFP. Did you want to discuss that with the impact of those revisions?
Sure. The, the FFP carries forward an amount, and I'll back up just a tiny bit for the public. This is the plan over the next 30 years that would, that I don't think any city around us has. And it's an effort to say, hey, you got eight fire stations. You're going to need to replace those within a certain amount of time. Here's about how much it's going to cost to replace it. You got parks you want to build. Here's about how much that, those costs will part, those parks will cost. You got a fire, a lifeguard headquarters to replace. You've got this project. So it phases that out over time. It includes developer contributions, includes general fund contributions, it includes the 30 plus, 30-ish million dollars we have set aside to seed this initially. So we went through and looked at the FFP again and we brought the number down by about $46 million. And that reflects, little different size to some of the fire stations. It reflects again, 2011 costs instead of 2007 costs. So that increases the ability to fund this project. What we didn't include and still will is the discussion we had this afternoon about maybe even looking at some of the projects that we're, we were going to replace and maybe we shouldn't even replace those at all. Or there should be additional revenue streams from some of the properties that may have a revenue stream and those go into the plan too. So basically it's a $46 million reduction that could be reduced even further.
I, I think if I read the numbers right, perhaps giving credit for both potential revenue and reduction in building costs, you're looking at another 20 to 30 million dollars of potential reduction.
I'm sorry, those are the ones that are already included in that.
No, no, I'm talking about on top of the 46 that you've already taken out, there could be another.
20 on top of that, right.
20 to 30 on top of that benefit to the overall plan.
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
Mr. Mayor? Do you have any current information on the cost recovery period for the solar panels? I know we looked at that on the Oasis project and we couldn't justify it because of the recovery on it.
I actually do. The plan, and this came, this came from Eric, we updated this just this.
Remind us who Eric is.
Oh, Eric is our, Eric is our civil consultant on the project and they handle all the calculations on all the, the operational systems, electric, electrical and those plumbing and so forth. So they've done the design for BCJ. They're looking at about 8,800 square feet in the center of the roofs, out of the direct view. We're looking at a 125 kilowatt system. We're going to use the black panels that, that most people are familiar with. We were looking at a flexible material, but it didn't work out, wouldn't bond with our roof. But the, the bottom line is the annual savings is $29,000 and the payback period is 18 years. So at, at the end of like, say 30 years, which we consider the life of the unit, we're looking like we'll be saving about $460,000 as our total savings minus our initial investment. So it does give us the lead points. It is very recognizable as a good green feature. And the idea would be that the system would be hooked into our, what we call our dashboard, which is electronic system that will be monitoring all of our systems for energy efficiency. And it'll also be available for public viewing. Here's a little chart of kind of the, the payback and the little star in the middle kind of shows that, that 18 year. Of course, it could vary depending on the rates, but that's kind of where we're at. That's the latest information on the units that we've proposed.
Does this take, I was going to say, does this take into consideration the fact that it's designed to be a very energy efficient building, that we're taking in air in different ways and our air conditioning needs may be lower because of the way the building is designed to function?
Yeah, yeah, this is totally integrated into our system.
How confident are we of the 30-year replacement period? Is that what that chart's saying?
Yeah, I think that chart's saying there's a variable. It looks like it's as high as about 22 years.
So that the panels would have to be replaced after 22 years?
Oh, no. The life is 30 years. That's, that's what the manufacturers are telling us, a 30-year life.
Does it have UV protection?
Yeah, I don't know. Does it really need it?
I had another question about the FFP before we completely leave that subject. I understand it's coming back in a few weeks and I'm wondering if as part of the, sort of the plan, if the city manager can also look at how a relatively small project that can be brought online really quickly, if the plan could absorb that. And what I'm referring to specifically is the Marion Bergerson Aquatics Facility. It's our only community aquatics facility. It's a flagship facility. We have a joint use agreement. Currently the city has swimming lessons, master's swimming, junior lifeguard tryouts. Next year, Corning Memorial High School has its 50th anniversary. The community is very involved with this. They're very supportive. It has a huge base of support in our community. We did fund, we participated along with the partnership of the community and the school district in the Phase One, which was the, the pool refurbishment. And now there's a Phase Two that involves the shower and locker room areas. So we would be looking at, you know, once again, a three-way split and also the possibility of extending the joint use agreement. So I would appreciate that that sort of be factored in or looked at being factored into our facilities financing plan, being our only aquatics facility.
Just a brief comment there. Councilmember Dale and I met with the folks advocating for those improvements and city's agreement with the pool, sorry, with Newport Mesa Unified expires in a couple of years. So I think that'd be a great question for the finance committee to look at when they see the FFPs again, which would probably be our next meeting and look about, look at, obviously we'd want to tie in long-term extension to our ability to use that pool into any contribution we might make. Then the council as a whole would have to make that decision.
Then I had.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Gardner?
The, the bridge. I've had, I get interesting comments on the bridge. I mean, a lot of you'll just like, forget it. But then others say, if we don't build it now and we find it necessary, we're going to pay more. And it won't be just be that the construction cost might be more. It's going to be more difficult to put it in because we will already, I mean, will we build the park as if it were going to be built or would we have to redesign part of it at a certain point?
We've actually graded the, the park so it fits. It would be just a question of going in, bringing electrical service, putting foundations in, a little bit of earthwork and a little bit of modification to the existing landscaping, but it could be built. And you're right, you're correct in saying it probably will cost more.
Okay. And then have we talked with our traffic engineers about how we're going to, if we don't do the bridge, how we're going to move the traffic? Because there was this suggestion that we weren't going to cross right there on the same side as the, as City Hall, but that we make them cross that way. And do we feel comfortable that if we don't build the bridge, we aren't going to impede traffic so much with our increased pedestrian traffic that we're going to screw up everything we've done on the San Miguel intersection?
I think, you know, I think that's something we should certainly be mindful of. We should definitely pay attention to that. Once the park opens, I would suspect that we would want to keep an eye on that if that changes. We certainly would have to time the signal to accommodate pedestrian crossing though. And if it, if there was a large number of pedestrians that, that occurred at kind of the worst times, so to speak, then we might want to revisit the bridge. It could be certainly a solution in the future.
And then I have one more question. It says something about installing Willow sculptures. I hate to even talk about art. But do these sculptures go in the sculpture garden? I mean, the park? Is it, have they gone through the Arts Commission where they recommended them out of the museum? Where do these stand in ours?
It is, it's correct. It is a design feature of the park.
You mean to bypass the process?
Exactly. Yeah, well, so.
Hey, it's fine with me if you want to send them to the Arts Commission. I'm sure they'll have an opinion.
Okay, so we.
It was proposed by PWP.
And we'd already approved those. I couldn't remember if that was part of it or not. Thank you.
Thanks for my comments.
Okay. I'm sorry. Councilman Selig?
Well, on the Voltae, it looks like we're going, spending $750,000 to save $460,000 over 30 years. The other, the other thing I want to discuss was the pedestrian bridge. I guess I'm the one that's kind of pushed for this in the, in the design phases of the project. And I, I actually talked myself out of it as far as, as we moved through it. We, we kept it in, but as we've gone through the process in the building committee, I've talked myself out of it. However, I attended the lecture that Peter Walker gave and I, after I came out of that lecture, I kind of had a different opinion of things. And let me go back why I thought it was important to, to deal with the pedestrian bridge to begin with is that we've got the unfortunate situation that we have this park that's separated by a street. And if we really want that park to, to function, we need to have a easy way for people to get back and forth across the street. And we worked really hard in the very beginning, as Councilmember Rosansky remembers and Councilmember Webb, when he was on the council, looking at going under San Miguel and trying to make the grade and get all of those things to work. And we, we couldn't make it work just because of the topographic considerations. And so then we went on to the, we went on to the bridge idea and designed the bridge and it's been part of the project. And like I said, I kind of talked myself out of it, but then is, after listening to Peter Walker's presentation and taking a look at some of the parks that he's designed and the fact that we are building really a special kind of a park here unlike any park that the city has or is likely to have in the future. And it really becomes an integral part of, of the park that's been created and connecting the two sides of the park together. And as Councilmember Gardner said, I believe that if we don't build it now, it won't get built. The, it will always be competing against other projects that we have to do. And my feeling is, is that the bridge will always lose out. It will be more expensive to build at the time. And I know we're trying to keep the costs down on this, on this project, but it really is a, an architectural, sculptural element. It's a functional element of the park. It's something that has a lot of benefits, not only from a user standpoint, people going back and forth across San Miguel easily. There's some pretty terrific views that are being created off of a view platform area at the south end of the bridge. And I think it has a lot of value to the park and the, you know, I, as we've gone through the design of this, this whole facility, the building committee has constantly been looking at these value engineering components. What do we put into it? What do we take out to it? How do we keep quality into the, into the project and still be able, looking at places where we can cut costs and bring it in at an economical, economical price? And so we've tried to keep the things in that really speak quality, things that will last a long time and that will be multi-generational in what it provides the city. And I guess when I look at this project and I'm reminded of the saying that it's the old Rolls Royce saying, I think from an ad back in the, back in the 30s or something where it said, "Long after the, the price is forgotten, the quality remains." And so I would, I would make the case that we should include the pedestrian bridge in this project.
But not the photovoltaics? It's getting late. Because I think you could make some of the same arguments there and plus you're saving the world.
Well, well, you could. I guess I'm just not convinced of, of the economics of the, of the payback. If we want to make a.
But your payback, what payback are you getting from the bridge?
Aesthetic.
All right, aesthetic, save the world.
Well, it's aesthetic, it's, you know, it's functional. I just don't think that the, the photovoltaic technology is, you know, quite, quite there yet. I think things are going to be changing. We're going to, we're going to plum the building for it. I think there'll be a lot of technological changes coming down the road and maybe at some point in the future, we add that in.
Councilman Dale?
On the other side of the equation, I thought early on, there was some possibility that the Library Foundation would help out with the project, whatever. Did that ever pan out or?
I'm not aware there was ever any effort to make that happen.
Okay.
I have a question on the photovoltaics. I know that some other cities are entering into contracts with companies that are basically paying for it. Like Huntington Beach, I think is putting in a whole bunch of them on city structures. Anything there where it won't cost us $750,000, but it still saved money?
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, if you recall, we did, we did look at that and I think we dealt with a couple of firms. I think in the end, the saving wasn't substantial enough to justify kind of giving control of the roof. I mean, that was the issue was that if we do that with the outside firm, they actually own the units on the roof and have control over how it's maintained and how it functions, I guess. But I didn't think there was enough payback in that. And I think in our conversations, I don't recall exactly, but I think it was kind of the same comment that, that Councilman Selig made was that, and the payback didn't seem like it was that good.
Councilman Hill?
Excuse me. I, I support Councilman Selig's comments about the bridge. I was very opposed to the bridge at the beginning. I think that if we didn't do the bridge, it would absolutely damage the relationship of the North Park to the Main Park. It just would not relate. It would have to be one of the most dangerous intersections that we would have in the city to get across. And I think that would be very frustrating to the public. I think that if we ever came back to do the bridge, it would not only cost more, but it would cost considerably more because we would have to be involved in regrading and just doing a whole lot of additional design work. So I don't, I'm not sure that it would be economically wise to even consider, I mean, it's a put it in or not put it in decision, I think, is how I would look at it. So I would support putting the bridge in. I would not support the PV panels. And the reason is twofold. Number one, for the payback. And number two, I have an aesthetic issue with those. I have an aesthetic issue with those of people that would live above the City Hall, look down at it and see them on the roof. And I don't think that that would be a pleasant addition to the City Hall. I'm a big supporter of PV. I have a ranch in Joshua Tree, and I've converted all of it over to PV. I did it because I thought it was the right thing. There's absolutely no payback on it. And, and I could not, with public funds, suggest doing that again.
Councilor Rosansky, did you still have another comment?
Okay.
Well, just a couple of things. I think I agree with Councilman Hill on the PV. Two things. We're not able to take advantage of a lot of the tax credits which drive the economics for a private business who are installing PV. And the other thing is that cost of PV is, in fact, declining rapidly, as in 20% and more on an ongoing basis. So if we want to revisit this issue in the future, we may have an opportunity to do so in a cost-effective way. And I'm intrigued by the idea of the bridge, now that you guys are all changing your minds about it. So I'll, I'll listen some more on that topic.
Councilman Daye?
Well, I think on the bridge, probably the persuasive sort of arguments for it that Councilman Selig revisited was the, the Peter Walker lecture, where you could sort of understand his vision and the connectivity between these sites and the views. And I think 25 years down the line, it's, when you kind of look at it, it's, it has its benefits. As far as the, the solar panels, we do need to modernize our, our community. And if these energy systems aren't quite here today, there's certainly things that, that we need to be considering. And, you know, in light of the discussion at the Planning Commission, maybe even taking that up and sort of, you know, what our policy is going to be in that area. But as a practical investment at this stage, it sounds as if the economics aren't quite there.
Okay, I'm going to weigh in for just a couple of seconds, and then we'll open it up to public comment here. First off, I want to reiterate what I've said before about the tremendously good work done here by staff and by the building committee in shepherding this project along in such a decisive and timely way. I mean, it's, it's a huge project to move along on this kind of a timeframe, and they've done a fabulous job, I think. I am, though, I can't escape a bit of disappointment in where the final numbers have come in from the standpoint that while they've done a great job trying to get the lowest possible numbers, I was still secretly hoping and really even sort of expecting that we were going to see a lower set of numbers than this, by perhaps as much as $10 or $15 million lower than what we're now seeing. And, you know, we've done as good a job as we can. You never, you have to deal with the market as you get it. And, you know, if we'd have been there three months earlier, maybe we would have gotten, you know, closer to that goal. But nevertheless, the numbers are not coming in, certainly where I had hoped. And so I'm going to sound a counterpoint on this issue of the bridge and, and agree on the issue of the photovoltaics, that it's, that's just a poor investment decision. And there may be a good day, that day when that becomes a good investment decision, and then that's when we should consider the photovoltaics. But on the bridge, I'm, I'm just not convinced that that's a bridge that, that is necessary aesthetic or functional connectivity between the two parks. The North Park is basically a dog park. I mean, I think that's the central feature of the North Park. I don't picture people with their dogs walking from the South Park to the North Park, or vice versa particularly. I don't see it as a connection, a destination connection. I don't see it that way. And I, given the topography and all of that, which is basically an uphill walk all the way up anyway, I, I just can't picture very many people going to the South Park and walking to the North Park. And probably vice versa, because especially if you drove to the North Park with your car and played with your dog for a while, you'd walk to the South Park, and then you've got to walk back uphill to get back to your car on the North Park. And so for me, the, the idea that if we don't build it now, it'll never get built, that's a good thing. Because I just don't see it. And, and while, while I've stated my disappointment that I was hoping the numbers would come in better, I am extremely encouraged by the developments on the facilities financing plan, whereby, you know, we're seeing the ability really to still complete all of our necessary project work, perhaps in even a more timely way than we thought before. And especially with this West Side Facilities Plan, being able to contribute even more to that. I'm comfortable that, that we've got a project here that is workable and buildable, but that still doesn't mean we should spend $2 million for a bridge that really isn't a necessary requirement.
I'm with you on the bridge, although with my batting average tonight, you may not want to hear that.
Well, so, so, you know, if anybody'd like to comment on that, but we do need to get the public comment.
Well, just let me make a comment on that, because the, I think the landscape architects would disagree with you, because they designed it basically as one park with a series of experiences as you go back and forth between the two sections of the park. So I don't think that they would agree with you, and I don't, after sitting through all the building committee meetings where we sat down with these people and went through all the details of, of the park, that it, that it is two parks. It really is one park, and it's a matter of whether you're going to be able to cross the street easily on a pedestrian bridge, or you're going to deal with going through cross-traffic. And, you know, if you take a look at, you know, the great parks in the world, Central Park in New York, streets go through it, and there's, they have more advantages than we do because of their topography, but there's pathways and connections that go under the streets. And it's the way you develop a park that is separated by major streets like this. So it's too bad we couldn't come up with a cheaper solution. I would have liked to have seen it, too. But again, it's a small percentage of the total cost of the project, and it really adds a lot. And I believe that if we don't do it now, we'll regret it in the future.
I have a question of the Public Works Director. So let's say we build the bridge. Does that mean we're going to eliminate the crosswalk there, and as well as the crosswalk on the other side of the street? I mean, are we really going to...
Well, no, I don't, I think we would try to eliminate at least one, one leg, because, you know, the, the major probably conflict...
Well, does that save us anything as far as light timing?
Yeah, it adds more green time on the, on the big traffic move, which is, which is the right turn.
Because there's less people crossing?
Right.
Overall? Is that, if you're crossing on the other side, you know...
It's kind of traffic engineering ease here, but you've got so much green time in a cycle. And if you can eliminate, you know, and you have to provide for pedestrians. If you don't have to provide for pedestrians in one of those moves, you can save that time and redistribute the green time to other moves. So you can improve the traffic flow. The pedestrian is, you're kind of locked in on the time. In fact, the federal guidelines are telling us that we have to lengthen those times. So all the crossing times are going to increase, which means it takes away more green time from the cars.
So the move that we're going to allow more time for is like the left-hand turn and like off of San Miguel, turning left, where that would cross the crosswalk?
Yeah, I think we're, we're looking at the crosswalk that's closest to the park, eliminating that one because of the right turn from northbound Avocado onto San Miguel.
Yeah, I...
You could take the three legs around if you wanted to, I guess.
I guess I, I've never really been convinced that the bridge is going to be that well-used either. I mean, I, I do see it as two discreet parks ultimately. I mean, it's a nice thing to have. And if, I guess if we were in better times, I'd say, yes, let's go for it. But I, I, I just, I, I agree with Mike. I just don't see where people are going to park at one and go back and forth to the other. There, there will be some. I mean, obviously, there'll be some people. But to build a $2 million bridge, which is not just a bridge because it's got an elevator in it as well, doesn't it, on one side?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're going to be maintaining an elevator out in the open, kind of, which has its own operational aspects. I don't even know what it costs to operate an elevator and have it inspected and maintained. So that adds to the burden of the park. I just don't see the payback there. I mean, it's harder to quantify, maybe photovoltaics, it's easier to quantify. But I just, I just don't see the utility of it. It's, it's, it's a want versus a need. So I guess I would favor eliminating both.
Okay, let's have public comment. Who would like to comment on the most important civic project this city has ever undertaken?
Oh, gosh. Dan Purcell, Corona del Mar. I was at that intersection yesterday or the day before. I thought I'd go up and find a nice scenic overlook to observe the new City Hall. And I ended up on the corner of the intersection of MacArthur and San Miguel with a pedestrian who was attempting to cross, very fit person. We must, I forget how much time we had to talk trying to get across that street. It's a real trickery, the way these things are set up. You push the button, it doesn't change, it doesn't change, and then it changes, and then it turns off again. It's flashing. You've got to run across. And this poor person, she's running across. I don't know how many lanes there are across there. Let's face it, there are some chinks in the decades-old automobile-centric design that Newport Center is. It's a beautiful place, but we're starting to see some of the ramifications of this now. You really can't move pedestrians through that area efficiently whatsoever with that volume of traffic in that physical space. And as you plan this going forward, I think you're going to see more of these issues coming down the road. Thanks.
While the next person's waiting to come up, do we have any studies on how many people actually cross at that intersection? At least now? I mean, I realize the parks will probably create a, create a...
We probably don't have the numbers. We could get them.
Well, we're thinking of all this tonight. Yeah, I can't imagine. I mean, do you have a sense of it?
We, we...
It would change it some, but do you have a sense of what it is today?
No.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
I agree with your solar panel. It just isn't payout, and it's shown everywhere. And, and they do have a negative effect on visual. So it's something that I would eliminate. As far as your work, I think it's been very, very good. I kind of hate to have to say that, but that it is...
Well, it's late, Dick. You're entitled.
As far as the bridge, we've seen bridges across major streets that they don't work very well, because just going up the flight of stairs is enough to discourage everybody.
This one has an elevator.
So they go on the street almost. And I don't know. So that, that comment I also would make. But I, I think you've done a pretty darn good job, and I, I'm very proud of you. I think that's, I'm not too hot on trying to hide the thing with a, a berm still. I think it's, if I came across MacArthur, I would still like to be able to see down that way. And the houses, 45 houses that look across and see nothing but land when they look that way, I can't see how in the hell we spend $8 million to try and save that view. But that's, we're all leaving. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Hen and City Council. I am one of the 45 houses right across the street. And we've gone through this process, and I'd like to...
Would you, would you state your name, please?
Oh, Jim Warren, 1201 Surfline Way. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate William Hahn. He's been just a really fantastic person to work with. And there has been some inconveniences, but they have been on it right away. And they've visited our house and really helped us out. And the main thing that brought me down here this evening was the fact that I read the pilot this morning, and there was your comment, Mayor Hen, on the solar panels above the city, you know, the, the new building and thing. I didn't know those were in the works, and so I wanted to come down and speak to them. And Councilman Hill already did speak to it, and the fact that they do create a glare. And glare is a big problem for us. In fact, our best day of the year, or the best day of the week, is always Sunday night, because the library is closed, and we get a really good view of the ocean with all of the windows that are blacked out, or, you know, the lights are shut off. So things have been moving along well, and I'm glad that you're all in favor of not having the panels. The, as far as the value of the bridge and things, I crossed that street over there quite a bit, and walking the dog and things, and you're really taking your life in your hands anytime you cross MacArthur Boulevard. You push the button, and you start to walk across. And before you get to the island in the center, the light is already flashing, and people are ready to go. And if you're coming from Newport Center, crossing MacArthur, you always have to watch for the people that are turning right just before you get there, because you kind of have to identify the car and start screaming at them before you get to the curb, because seldom do they slow down. They're just making a right turn and gone. So I think there's some value to the bridge. And I know the cost is expensive, but several years ago, and it wasn't that many years ago, when we went through Measure B, this whole project was going to cost $60 million. That was part of the, when we had the election and things. And we were going to sell this existing City Hall property and pay it off in full. So we were getting out scot-free. And that's how the election went across. And we've gone by that, what, 125% now? And we haven't even laid a stone yet. So as long as we're going in this direction, we might just well burn hell's fire and make it a beautiful one. So I, I do think that we've all worked together on it, and everyone's been helpful. And, and I know that we'll continue to get that help. But my wife and I are very much in favor, and our neighbors in favor of the bridge, but definitely not the solar panels or anything. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Ron Hendrickson. You know, it seems, I've, from the very beginning, I've had concerns about the bridge. But then, like a number of you, I was at the Peter Walker presentation, and he just made one heck of a case for the bridge. And I'm wondering if, if it isn't a little premature to make that decision in height. I, I've always wondered exactly how someone, you know, trying to figure out who's really going to be going back and forth on that side of the street. And I'm not clear whether they can get over the west side of Avocado and, and then cross there. So why would they cross on the, you know, on the east side if they can just cross the street and go west and cross on the west side? But looking from their earlier plans, and I have not seen the final plans, it, it looked to me like it was going to be pretty difficult to, to get on the ramp, getting up to the bridge, to go over the bridge, and then get up on top if you're, if you're not in a park. If you're in the, if you're, if the purpose of the bridge is to go from park to park, then I, there, I think there's some comments that the mayor's made that makes it kind of questionable. But I really think you need to study it more. I think Steve has asked some very good questions about the pedestrian traffic there. And I think it's a really important decision, because I think aesthetically, it would be really great. But, you know, there are, the elevator issue, and I, I haven't even seen it. Has everyone seen the bridge itself? I don't know what it looks like. So aesthetically, I, I just hope that you, you know, put a lot of thought into this. I think tonight may not be the time to make the decision. Thanks.
Further comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council, you know, as it, as it relates to the bridge. I was at that Peter Walker presentation. I, I bought the idea of landscape as art, but I didn't connect that to a bridge over San Miguel.
Mr. Mayor?
Anyway.
You must have had your back to the front.
I guess so. I didn't see any pictures of bridges over streets there.
I have a question kind of unrelated to the, the bridge, and that is this, the inspection contract. When we had the plan check contract, how closely involved was the city in sort of finalizing those plans?
Well, the way, the way the plan check contract was set up was so that they reported directly to the city manager's office. And they essentially took the place of our existing building department staff. So they, in every way, duplicated what, what our staff would have been doing in reviewing the plans, checking for code compliance, and, and requiring corrections, and so on and so forth, so.
Because I noticed that the inspection people, it's the same firm as the plan check, and it's actually the same individual according to the, what's in the contract. And what happens if there's an error in the plan check? You know, what do they do then? Have they made an error in their own work? Are they going to fess up? Or, I mean, how is that going to work?
Well, I think, I think, you know, the, the building permit itself is, is a record. It's a public record and all the things that are in there. Now, will their inspector see one or two things that maybe might... one or two things that maybe might have been missed? Perhaps. And I think those are things that we're going to have to sit down and address when they're raised to us, just like it happens every day in our own building department. Quite often, plan checks get approved, building permits get issued, and then the inspector might see something in the field that maybe wasn't caught. And I think this firm is uniquely qualified because they're very familiar with the project. They understand the project, and they can go back to the folks that did that check. So that's why it's good to stay with the same firm.
Yeah, I guess that, my concern is it's the same person. Isn't that kind of unusual?
Well, the people doing the inspection are different. The personnel that are actually doing the inspection are different than the folks who did the plan check.
Yeah, that's, that's not what the proposal says.
I think you're looking at the project manager overall. Is that Dennis Yu? But the actual, Steve's correct, the people actually doing the work are completely different from the folks who did the work to do the plan check.
There are two different entities here. In fact, there are representatives from Anderson Penna, Inner West here tonight in case we have specific questions. But I'll tell you that there are, there are folks that are essentially assigned the plan check. And for those kinds of things, the folks that did the original plan check, during the process, if, let's say there are changed conditions, and we need to go back and say, okay, well, this is no longer compliant, we need to redesign this and recheck it, the same people will be able to recheck for code compliance. Now, the people that are actually out inspecting the work will, while they work for the same firm, they'll be looking at that from, you know, their set of eyes. And if there is an issue, there's something missed, it will be, it will be brought up.
I just want to make sure that there's a safeguard in there, that, you know, we're purchasing this $85 million GMP, that we get an 85 that's built according to that standard.
I think, I think we have that there. And we'll make sure we're diligent on staying on top of it.
Okay. I think it's pretty clear about the photovoltaics. But with regard to the bridge, I guess we ought to straw vote that, and then we can do a motion on the whole thing. So all those in favor of the bridge to nowhere, just raise, raise your hand.
Are you setting that up for failure?
I'll rephrase that. Can I, can I see those that would be in favor of the bridge? One, two, three. Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the staff recommendations, one through six, with the additions by the Office of the City Attorney and his memo.
Can I make an amendment to that motion? I propose a condition number seven. The thing has got to be done by October of 2012 so I can at least have one council meeting in there before I leave City Council.
Is it okay if there's a lot of dust and...
I don't care. It's fine with me.
Acoustical tiles around?
Fine with me. Great. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that, Councilmember Sellers, you're talking about the communication to you today from the Office of the City Attorney, February 22nd, with the amendment.
Yes, Agenda Item 16, minor revisions to Amendment Number Two.
Thank you.
I would just add that I really appreciate Steve gave us conservative estimates. You know, we weren't surprised. I thought that would work out well. Thank you.
Did I hear a second to the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, all right. Any further comment?
I'd just like to say that I've worked seven years on this project since I came on City Council. First, it was going to be here, and then it moved down there, and I'm just glad to see that it's finally moving forward. And there was, it's been years, even before I got here. So it's nice to see that we're finally able to accomplish this.
All right, let's vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Well, I see we have uniformed policemen down here in the front row that have been patiently sitting here for the last agenda item, having to do with our helicopter program.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Your, your council policy, no, I forgot if I was saying six or eight, 10, provides that you are to cease and not take up any further agenda items after 11 o'clock. You have it within your authority, of course, as a council, to waive your policy. But right now, you've exceeded 11 o'clock, and therefore, to be consistent with your policy, you need to adjourn.
I move we waive the policy.
Second. Any discussion in council? Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to comment on that? Seeing none, let's vote. Thank you.
Motion carries.
For keeping us on the straight and narrow with our council policies. So now, we are still on to then Agenda Item Number 17 regarding the helicopter program. I presume we have a short staff meeting regarding this, and then...
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. Short staff presentation, and I note a couple folks in the audience. I see Chief Johnson, Captain Johnson, and Tim Starn, who's in charge of the ABLE program. So Chief, why don't you come up briefly and just, I know we're all a little sleepy, but, put you on the spot here. Or Captain Johnson, whoever you prefer, to kind of give a briefing of where we are. Yeah, I appreciate that. We obviously didn't rehearse this at 11:33.
Good evening, Captain Dale Johnson with the Police Department. Essentially, we find ourselves in the position today that the City of Costa Mesa has voted to withdraw from the joint powers agreement with the City of Newport Beach to provide the airborne law enforcement services program. That, in essence, is the joint powers agreement by which we funded and managed our helicopter program here within the city. We find ourselves in a position that once we're served or formally notified by the City of Costa Mesa, they have 120 days with which they're able to withdraw from the JPA. That would put us, if they served us around March 1st at July 1st, essentially is the 120 days we're looking at. This item, I think, is informational only at this point. We are looking diligently at other opportunities or other options for a helicopter service within the city, where that would involve some future regionalization of a helicopter program, contracting with some of the current helicopter programs within the county, either from Orange County, Anaheim, or Huntington Beach. Or again, as I said, looking at a larger regionalization program, bringing other cities on board. And I have any, any questions that I can answer.
Councilman Gardner?
When you come back with any kind of proposals, did you come back with some figures? I'm looking at the Airborne Law Enforcement Association letter, and he says, "We already know how many lives have been saved, acts of crime halted, and criminals captured." I don't know that. We all assume it's effective, but I get a lot of complaints, I'm sure others do, about helicopters and how noisy they are. So some information of how in our, this city it has been effective, that would be helpful in making future decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Sellers?
Is anything going on in law enforcement towards using drone-type of surveillance things as opposed to using helicopters?
There are some, some products are available largely from the technology that's been generated through the military efforts. Within an urban environment, it creates a real problem, though. FAA rules the ability to maneuver them effectively within a more populated area. It's something that we are looking at, some we'll continue to research. You know, it becomes a cost-benefit analysis based on, you know, what we would save and whether or not it meets our specific mission, which is kind of unique to an urban policing environment.
Are you aware of any agencies that are actually using it, or is it just something that's theoretical?
Miami, right. Did Miami decide to use it?
Utah is using a blimp.
Were we reading that Miami was using a drone?
There are a couple agencies. Miami has one, as complicated as it are. It's still kind of experimental.
And there are, there are different products. Some of them are hovercraft-type of products with, which have expensive cameras on them, whereupon you can, you know, they're very mission-specific. You can mount them or launch them in support of a SWAT operation or for short durations of time. They, again, they become very mission-specific depending on how we define what it is we want it to do. The, the large military type of drones that we see in use in the Middle East, you know, where there's a remote cockpit somewhere where someone's flying them, those are, those are very costly. And again, with the FAA regulations, you, you run into some issues in terms of the urban environment we have here. But we'll, we'll continue to research those or any other opportunities.
Okay, I had, I had a question here. There, there is mention of, you know, that there are five positions that become freed up, I guess, as a result of the cessation of this program. But it was unclear to me whether there in fact is any savings associated with those positions being freed up. There was some language in here about those individuals filling otherwise open positions. If we have otherwise open positions, did we really need them and need them to be filled? I guess those are the questions that I have. What is the true savings here associated with the staff free up?
There is a, we currently, in terms of personnel, we have a sergeant that is currently assigned to the ABLE program, as well as a, a police officer who's a pilot's position. In addition, there are three aircraft mechanics that also work for the ABLE program but are employees of the City of Newport Beach. They are financed currently through the joint powers agreement, meaning, and that they, they are financed through the M&amp;O of ABLE itself. We also contract with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and those mechanics provide mechanic services to the, to the Orange County Sheriff's Department's aircraft also. So in essence, those mechanics are financed 50% through the Orange County Sheriff's Department, the other 50% through ABLE, and ABLE's M&amp;O is paid 50/50 by the City of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. So essentially, Newport Beach finances 25% of their salary benefits, and the others are paid through our partners with ABLE. The pilots' positions, the sergeant and the police officer position, are employees of Newport Beach Police Department and are financed aside from our contributions we make into the ABLE program. That's a cost borne solely by the City of Newport Beach. We currently have vacant positions, which we are budgeted for within the Police Department, for sergeant's position and for a police officer's position. Those positions could be rotated back into the Police Department to fill currently vacant positions. I believe the chief has requested, however, those positions not be eliminated from a budgetary standpoint in order to meet some other needs within the Police Department. And I, I think that that will be part of our eventual budget presentation we make to the city manager. The three pilots, or correction, the, the three mechanics positions, their positions are unsure. At this point, we don't know if, you know, is any employee looking for layoff, they have the opportunity perhaps be reclassified into another position, or look for other positions within the, the city that they may be qualified for. And we have, we haven't, we haven't been able to determine yet if they in fact would be able to, or if they would be subject to layoff.
Okay. So I guess the answer is we're going to figure the answer to that out as we go through the budget process.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
If, if they're reintegrated into other positions, there's, their position, their old position's going to be eliminated. There is going to be a savings, at least with the mechanics, for sure.
Yes, sir. And there's also the M&amp;O, the, the cost of the ABLE program itself.
Well, I think the mayor was talking about...
The personnel costs.
Personnel costs. And even the sergeant and the officer, those positions are budgeted, and we're, you know, they're included in our budget. So there will be a budgetary savings anyway, eliminating the two ABLE positions, correct?
Yes, sir. Those are, those are two, they could fill vacant positions that we wouldn't have to hire someone else.
Right. You're going to recruit anyway, regardless of what, unless we could just eliminate those positions because they're not filled now, and maybe they don't need to be filled. That's a whole other determination.
That's the crux of the question.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other council comment? I guess for my, for myself, I would, I very much encourage trying to find a substitute program here that hopefully will be much more cost-effective, that'll still enable this force multiplier benefit, but perhaps on a as-demand basis or on-demand basis as opposed to constant, you know, flying basis. But in any event, are there any members of the public that have a comment on this item? Okay.
Just one other question. Is there any expert, understanding or expectation of how quickly the equipment will be disposed of?
That has yet to be determined also. The, as indicated, we, I believe in the staff report, we, we currently have three aircraft that will need to be sold. The JPA has very specific language in the manner with which they're put to market and that they would be sold. There's also tools, equipment, that it currently is on the, the aircraft themselves that isn't necessarily sold with the aircraft. A, an estimate for continued operations before the assets could be liquefied and split would be probably a year. And that's, that...
So we'll need the hangar anyway for a year, the hangar that we're...
That, that's possible, depending on how quickly the aircraft sell. And again, the equipment can be disposed of. It's a possibility. Yes, sir.
I've had experience with the sale of private aircraft. It's not a straightforward process, believe me. Not even close. So I'm not surprised if it takes six months anyway, and maybe more.
I can't imagine that a lot of other police departments are probably going to add aircraft, so.
Okay. Then this basically is receive and file, no action required. And so I think we're done with that item. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor Hen and members of the council, I know the hour is very late, and this is a very brief comment. I believe at the last meeting you had two weeks ago, a promise was made that you were going to be reading the titles of ordinances and resolutions before taking a vote on them. I think that's already been forgotten after two weeks. And it's not entirely an academic issue. As a practical example, when you were discussing your new council policies, I was hoping to offer some comment about the new proposed voting abstention rule. And I had the impression you were voting just to resolve the three-minute, five-minute issue. It appears you were voting to adopt the entire resolution. So it can create confusion when you don't clearly state what the vote is about. Thank you.
I guess we did say we were going to do that, and we didn't.
And it was an oversight by me, and the city clerk pointed out to me after you made the motion, and I said, "Move on, and we'll do it next time." So that was, well, actually, under the circumstances, it was an oversight, and I apologize.
So we'll take a mulligan on that one and do it better next time.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Nichols?
I have one more comment and one question. You had a, a thing that was on, about the budget, and I just wondered, was, I didn't see exactly where that was an item on your agenda, but it was clearly under February 22nd to be handled. And it was a budget update with lots of questions on how to reduce the total budget overall. Was, was this supposed to be on the agenda? Was this, are you familiar?
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
What, what is that?
I don't know. It's a...
That's from 2010.
Okay, but I think that, that was under the, at least I found it under the same category, under the same dates. And I am, I don't know what the other people are, but I assume...
Excuse me, did you pull that off of the website?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just...
I'll, I'll review the website, but I, I would bet that was on the 2010 section. But I'll, I'll check.
It might have been. Excuse me. I, I do have a question. That website and the new things you've added, it's horribly complicated. I don't know how the hell you ever get anything off of there.
We still go with the two.
My wife managed by going to the next section down, but it, we couldn't do anything with that. I hope other people have better chances than I did.
Thank you for your comment. Further comments?
Good evening. It's almost good morning. Corky Rawlings, I live in Newport Beach, and Mr. Rosansky, don't laugh. But I'm here to express concern about the traffic circle on Clay and Santa Ana. We spent many years debating, meeting, we hired a consultant and for our traffic calming in Newport Heights, and finally, we got our circle. Two weeks ago, I ran into Don Crote and made an offhand remark about what's new in the neighborhood, and was surprised to hear that the circle was coming down, and in fact, it is. How many meetings, debates, and hired consultants were included before that decision was made? I try to keep up. Obviously, I don't. I don't Twitter, I don't Facebook, and I have a very hard time going online to find out what's going on. I have many neighbors, four that I could name, on Santa Ana who were thrilled with the circle. It has cut down track, trucks, it has cut down speed, and they are horrified. You have received emails from Joan who has expressed her concern about the fact that it's coming out. And suddenly, in my opinion, someone or someones have decided to remove it. That's my comment. Thanks.
Well, just by way of response, that, that whole issue was the subject of a fairly sizable discussion at council.
It was a month ago.
Yes, about 30... Considering, yes, about 30 days ago. And we did in fact have public comment from people near that item, so, thank you.
Honorable heir of city council, my name is Peter Kamiski. I come to you from the museo in Anaheim, the museum in Anaheim. The reason I come to you tonight is to let you know about a challenge, an Earth Day challenge called Green Impacts Trash Artist Challenge. Our second year running this, and it's a program that's run through the school system, boys and girls clubs, YMCA, and the other after-school, where the kids convert trash into art. Fantastic system. Just a quick example of the pieces, what, two of the pieces we got last year, a freestanding 12-foot, what they called a greenzilla, that was made from pizza boxes that unfortunately the school had eaten that week. And everything down to the finest piece of jewelry. This is a program where the kids make the art, they then submit a video, whether that be in the form of PowerPoint, still photos, or a full-on video. And then there are three awards. One is by age category. One is an art award, one is a sustainability or green award, and one is a people's choice. So then people get to view online. It's only possible thanks to the Connect a Million Lines program from Time Warner. Our county sponsors Disneyland, Clean City, Orange County Department of Education in Hilton. But the only reason it happens in Newport Beach is because of the support of Vulcan. So they were able to support it for your city, which means there's guaranteed a finalist, actually, potentially three, but guaranteed one finalist, thanks to the, the efforts of Vulcan and the, and the work they do. These posters have gone to all the schools in both private, public, also to all the boys and girls clubs. What I would ask, if it might be possible, if I mind giving those to city manager, if you guys could possibly include them in your offices or in your areas, we would love a number of entries and we would really appreciate two things. One is, of course, making sure we, we thank Vulcan, they're just fantastic for us. But two is, I wouldn't mind coming back potentially with the schoolkids who are finalists of the program on a slower night and present those for you as well. Thank you very much.
Can you get the students to pop out a Reagan statue for us? We're, we're having a opening competition.
Only if the Arts Commission juries it. Okay, well, it may be possible for us to do a little promotion of that on the website or whatever.
Anybody that will sit here until 11:50 through all, I think we'll bend over backwards for him. And note that we just moved public comment up at the next meeting too much earlier, so. Yeah.
All right. So we are, do we have any more public comment? Apparently not. So we're up for motions for reconsideration. Hearing none. Then we do intend to adjourn the meeting tonight in the memory of Frances Anita Snyder. And I'd be happy to read this memoriam to her. Frances Anita Snyder died earlier this month following a lengthy illness. Her daughter, Amy Sink, is the editor of Corona Del Mar Today. Mrs. Snyder, nay Frances Hoover, was born and raised in Illinois. She was the youngest daughter of Fred and Mary Hoover. One year after graduating from high school, she met James Snyder. They eloped in January 1951 after a whirlwind courtship. The Sniders made their home in the Chicago area before relocating to St. Louis County in the 1960s. Throughout her lifetime, Mrs. Snyder had many hobbies and interests, including bridge, gardening, traveling, and volunteering in her community. In the 1980s, she co-owned a dried flower business. Preceded in death by her husband, James, Mrs. Snyder is survived by her children, James T. Snyder and his wife, Alicia, Guy Snyder, Gail Snyder, and Amy Snyder Sink, and her husband, Marshall Sink, and their grandchildren, her grandchildren, James, Angela, Melissa, and Melissa Snyder, and Erin and Julie Sink, extended family and many friends. And that concludes our evening tonight. Thank you. We are adjourned.